Okay, welcome everyone to the meeting of the Rutland Town Select Board for February 27, 2024. We have four out of five select board members here. Joe Donardo, Mary Ashcroft, Matt Geddy, and Sharon Russell. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America and the Republic of Canada, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We will have a couple of folks joining us, but let's go through the first few things. Approval of the Select Board Minutes of the February 13th meeting. It's in your packet. Is there a motion? Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and suggested to approve the minutes. Any additions, corrections, deletions? I don't think. This is what happens when I don't have a packet bill. Um, all in favor of approving the minutes as printed, please say aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries and there are no, I found it. The mail didn't deliver my packet.
Great.
And I wasn't going to print it off because there were 100 pages on it. I just, I just put a new toner cartridge in it. I didn't want to put another one in, so. Okay, any board member announcements? Feel quiet? All right. Update from the Select Board Chair, the only thing I have is a reminder that the next edition of our town newsletter, The Circle, any articles are due on March 15th. Oh, and there was one other quick thing. If I can find it. I got the Town of Clarendon annual report. They do this thing, and I think we ought to take a look at this. They send a eight-page, easily mailable edition with the warning in it and with the major budget. And then they say, this is a condensed town report. If you want the big thing, go to Town Hall. So this could save some money. Take a look.
And so they're still printing copies at Town Hall? They're just not mailing them?
They're not mailing them.
You're saving the mailing.
Yeah. So anyway, just a thought from a neighboring town. My mailing address is North Clarendon, so. Okay, questions from the floor, public comments and anyone, this is the time for anyone who is not otherwise on the agenda to, and I think we'll take you folks early, I think we'll move you up, but is there anyone here? I noticed Senator Colomore is here, and unless he's turned into a Rutland Town Select Board groupie, I suspect he's here to talk to us about something.
Well, I was invited to attend, so I'm here.
Oh, okay, okay. And I think Carrie will be chatting later, and I think that's what it's about. Is it the childcare tax thing?
I think it's about the school property tax.
It's about the school property tax.
Okay, good. So.
It's even more.
Well, Carrie, do you wanna, do you wanna give an overview and see if Senator Colomore can maybe answer some questions or give us an update?
Uh, well, hold on. I was hoping that maybe he could give some insight as to what's happening in Montpelier as far as the 5% cap and any information on how things are calculated up there so that we have information going into town meeting for Tuesday when we vote.
Sure, I'd be glad to, Carrie, and you made the initial suggestion that I attend, and then Bill Sweet added his, be it nice if you could join us kind of thing. So here I am. Yeah, I think most of you are well aware that the legislature in 2022 passed Act 127, which included a 5% cap on property taxes. It unfortunately became very clear with some of the budgets that were warned early enough that we had made a huge mistake in doing that, and there were some unintended consequences that occurred as a result of that. So the House Ways and Means Committee began work on coming up with a solution for it. Basically, what happened was if you didn't, if you exceeded by 5% until 10%, many school districts felt like they had access to free money, if you will. So they did put in budgets that were substantially over what was projected. So as of February 13th, the Agency of Education forecasted that statewide education spending would increase by $243 million from fiscal year 2024 to fiscal year 2025. Obviously, the state is able to find money on any given year to close the gap between what has been paid for by the lottery and the sales tax and the other taxes that we take to fund the education. And the gap is what is normally what the property tax funding would be. And normally it is short by a certain amount, and we can find money to close the gap. There is no way that the legislature can find $243 million to close that gap. What we did in past years was use some of the ARPA and CARES money, that one-time federal money, to close the gap so that the result of the increase in property taxes wasn't as great. But that was not on the table this year. The one-time federal money is gone. We've spent every last penny of it. And so we need to come up with a different way to do it. So what we did was come up with another mechanism to do that. The transition provision that initially capped growth of all districts at 5% was repealed. And this is all pre-CLA, by the way, so it doesn't take into account the common level of appraisal, which will happen a little bit later on. And we repealed that, as I mentioned. We implemented a new transition mechanism for fiscal years 2025 through 2029. And what this will do would be to apply a cent, like a penny, a cent discount to some district tax rates based on changes in law that had to do with the pupil waiting situation, which was what Act 127 was. I guess in 25 words or less, if a school district has a lot of marginalized students, students who see English as a second learner, a second language, and are, you know, financially strapped, if you will, living in poverty, they get more weight attached to their property tax capacity than schools that don't face that. So just to take an example, Rutland City would make out a lot better than Rutland Town because they have many more students living in poverty. You know, you go back to the old Gold Town situation where Rutland Town was a sending town, and so were a lot of other towns. And so it unfairly, in my view, penalized through school districts that didn't have those students attached to it. So what this will do is each district will receive a one-cent discount off its pre-CLA homestead rate for each percent decrease that it experienced in that taxing capacity based on the new pupil waiting system. The other thing that it'll do, it phases out, by the way, over a five-year period. So the first year, which would be FY '25, it's 100%, then it drops to 80, then 60, then 20, and then finally it goes away. But the other thing it does, and I think Carrie's well aware of this, is that it gives school districts until April 15th to rewarn their school budgets if need be. So in Rutland Town's case, I don't think they're going to rewarn it. They're going to live with whatever the budget vote is next Tuesday. But if it comes back and it is defeated, then the school board will have the ability to take the budget back in, reappraise it, if you will, look at it again, see if there's anything to cut, and then rewarn it and put it out for a second vote, and they'll have until April 15th to do that. The other issue, of course, is if by July 1st, the budget has not been approved by Rutland Town voters, the school budget, not the municipal part, but the school budget, then the previous year's budget will go into effect. So you'll never be without a school budget. It's just a question of whether it's a new one or whether it would fall back on FY '24 school budget without the projected increase. So I don't know if I explained that well enough for most folks. I still believe, by the way, there's probably about seven people in the whole state of Vermont that can adequately and accurately explain how we fund school education, and I'm not one of them. So I, I'll yield to anybody with any questions, and I thank folks for having me in.
That was the best explanation I've heard yet.
Yeah.
Like pricing note.
You got, you got like a nine and a half, Brian, so that was good.
Well, thank you.
We only grade them one to five now, so that's, or one to four, so it's a three.
Mary, is it a?
Yeah, Carrie, go ahead.
So Brian, I want to thank you so much for coming here and talking about this. This week has been an eye-opener for me. I mean, I'm just a town clerk, but it affects our office if the school budget doesn't pass. But people have to realize that we're not just out there voting yes for everything. They really do have to think about everything that goes into what we're asking for on our ballots. And Brian, you mentioned that there's so many different things that go into what comes down and makes us have a property tax bill that's low for our residents. And you mentioned waiting and the weight of the child, and definitely school budget is part of it. And there's other factors that go into it, so it is kind of hard to understand what they do with that equation, but I encourage voters to really think about things on Town Meeting Day and how it impacts pretty much everything on their tax bill.
Yeah, I like to compliment the Town School Board. I think they do their best every, every year to be fiscally responsible and only put things on the budget that is absolutely necessary. I think that's true for most of the Rutland County school districts. And to be fair, there will be winners and losers in this. So the legislature doesn't always do well. Let me put it another way. The legislature rarely does something without unintended consequences, unfortunately. Sometimes we don't think things through all the way, and Act 127, I think, is a classic example of that. So there will be districts that actually go up a little bit, maybe 3%, 4%, 5%. There will be other districts, not necessarily in Rutland County, that go up as much as 39% and 40%. We heard very loudly from folks in Stowe who are terrified about what their property tax rate is going to be. And there obviously are districts that unfortunately didn't take the fiscal responsibility as seriously as Rutland Town did. And they just voted to spend a whole bunch of money on a whole bunch of things, and they're going to have to probably hear a no vote from the residents and then take it back in. So I don't know what it's going to mean specifically for Rutland Town, but I guess we'll have to live with what the voters say next Tuesday. And if it's rejected, then we'll take it back in. The municipal vote, I don't think will have any issues. I mean, I don't know. I can't predict the future. But there was also a separate ballot item about the $4 million expenditure to finish the second floor of the elementary school. And given the, I guess, attention that this is all getting, I'm not sure where that winds up being either. But there were separate ballot items, I think, for both the, the school budget itself and also that extra $4 million bond that was requested. So I'm hoping that everybody will, you know, find a way to be comfortable with whatever we decide. But, you know, as is true, that's all up to the voters.
Okay, any other questions? Brian, are you going to be at our Monday evening meeting before town meeting on Tuesday?
I won't be there in person. I don't know if there's a Zoom link, but I would be glad to do that.
Okay. Okay, we, we think there's supposed to be a Zoom link, so we hope you can join us.
Yeah, generally, Mary, I drive up on Monday evenings and then stay until Friday and then drive back to Rutland, so.
I think you guys get off for Town Meeting Week, though.
Oh, next week, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's another exit for me. I'm hopping on a plane on Sunday to go down to see my wife in Florida. So I'll be gone all next week until Sunday, the 10th, I return.
Okay, so, well, thank you very much for updating us on this. Appreciate your help.
I wish I had better news.
Yeah, well. Okay, anyone else? Questions from the floor or public comments? Anyone who's not otherwise on the agenda? Okay, and then if the board is in agreement, let's go down to action needed. Item B, which is the board to meet with Enman Kesselring Engineering regarding a deviation request. So.
Most everyone, I'm Nicole Kesselring with Enman Kesselring Engineers, and this is Jim Theodore, the landowner. Jim owns the property that's off the south end of Holly Lane. And I believe that prior, or his designer for the wastewater systems has come before you for approval for the subdivision, and I think that may still be pending approval. My office has been involved in seeking stormwater permitting and also the roadway design. So the, the project is a 50, about a 52-acre property that Jim is looking to subdivide into five lots. Pretty low-impact development, and there is an existing roadway that comes in off the south end of Holly Lane and goes all the way through the property because Velco has a transmission line corridor that crosses through the south end of the property. And I have a plan here that I can kind of point to. Colored, so it might be a little difficult to see, but on the, on this side of the plan is the cul-de-sac on Holly Lane. And then the property stretches to the south. The Velco transmission line runs across this end. And this is the roadway coming in that'll serve the lots. We're proposing to make improvements to that roadway, and that's what we're really here to discuss with you tonight. And just in terms of layout, we have Lot 1 is on the west side of the road. Lots 2, 3, and 4 are on the east side, and then Lot 5 is off the end. So we're proposing improvement to about 1,800 feet of roadway, which would take you from the end of Holly Lane down to the cul-de-sac that we have at the end here. Lot 5 is just accessed by a driveway off of the end of that cul-de-sac. And so right now, the design is depicting the 20-foot roadway width that the town standard would require, even though this is going to remain a private roadway that'll be put under an association and it won't be a town roadway.
Yeah.
What we wanted to request is consideration for decreasing the width of the roadway to either 12 or 16 feet. And it, what we would do in order to allow, if there was opposing traffic, this is a hill coming off of Holly Lane that drops down toward the East Creek. We would propose a pull-off off to the side so that if there was opposing traffic, someone would be able to pull into that pull-off. Along this stretch, there are a couple driveways along the way where someone could kind of scoot into the end of the driveway if traffic needed to pass. So that's what we're proposing right now would be, just one pull-off to accommodate traffic on this stretch. There are very good sightlines here. You can see the road is pretty much straight. It rises up in this direction as well as toward Holly Lane. East Creek is the low point in the roadway. And one of the benefits of decreasing the width would be, we have an existing stream crossing here, and then there are wetlands around that stream and a 50-foot wetland buffer. So throughout this stretch, we are impacting wetland buffers and a little bit of wetland that this, so far, the state wetland scientist is not very pleased about. And we are, we've been working to try to minimize or avoid any wetland impacts over here because this is also a large wetland complex over here. So.
Whose property is that to the south? Or, yeah, I guess it's south.
This direction?
No, sorry, it would be then to the west.
Here? Oh, over here.
Does that border, what was Clifford's?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Newmeyer's, but there was, I think that borders Clifford Young's former property.
Okay.
And maybe Max Steel on one back corner.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Maybe. Underneath the power line is Smith, Doc Stickney's daughter.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
And then I think Abbott Hill is this property here.
Yeah, that comes in from Route 4.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see Newmeyer on the, on the, if that's accurate, yeah.
So are you saying the state's not going to allow a 20-foot road?
Not saying they won't allow it.
Seems like, I'm not a road expert, but 12 feet doesn't sound ideal to me. And there's a couple of things that come to mind. One is, but if you had to run fire trucks down there, number two would be these developments start out private roads, and then they come and ask us to take them over.
The idea of turning around in people's driveways or pulling in, quite frankly, a good many people would not be happy that their driveway was being used.
Nicole, are you familiar with Amanda Place off of East Pittsburgh Road and down in that?
I'm not, no.
Okay, well, that was developed a long time ago, and the road doesn't meet the grade requirements that the town's road standards do, nor will this.
Right.
And there were numerous homes down there. And at the time, you know, when the board was looking to take it over, they were concerned about it. Now, the road was pretty well done, and I do believe it was full-width road. But the emergency vehicles still have to go there. Those five landowners are entitled to the same services that everybody else is, and this is going to be a private road. I have real big concerns because, number one, this is 2024. Within less than 10 years, somebody will be back here in front of a select board asking that to be taken over as a town road. So my suggestion would be build it to the town standards now, because in 10 years, it'll be exorbitant cost. And try to meet the grade requirements. That hill is pretty steep and it was straight. I don't know if you can make the grade requirements by making a curve or not, probably not. But all attempts should be made to that because I know where this will end up. We're, it sounds great to be a private road now, but things will change. And in the long run, it'll be a lot more to your benefit to just, it's expensive. You're going to have some trouble maybe with the wetlands and stuff, but in the long run, it'll end up being a town road in the end. I'm almost positive. But my biggest concern is regardless if that's 12-foot wide or 20-foot wide road, you still got to, to Matt's point, you're still going to have to get down there and back with fire trucks. And I've always been concerned that private roads are not maintained to the same level of winter travelability that the rest of the town's road do. I mean, and it's always a concern. You put a three-quarters of a million-dollar truck down there, and it ends up sliding off, rolls over, fire, you know. I'd have a, have a hard time with that. And I wasn't here when some of these other roads done, and I said, well, you know, if this comes up, and I'm here, I'm going to make, I'll make my speech. But every effort should be made to try to comply with the town's standards as in place because it'll end up being, somebody will want that road being, you know, there's, there's numerous roads we've taken over, so.
You're, you're certainly right about the steepness of this section.
Yeah, and, and I don't know if you can do anything for that if you took a look at maybe some type of just S-curve in it a little bit. I don't know how much property there. It's, it's very difficult. But that's almost like a bob-side run. Well, actually, a bob-side run would have some curves. That's more like a ski jump. It's right straight down.
We are making some improvement to that by keeping the whole section under 14% or just at 14%. I don't think Jim has a right of way across that this is not his land.
Okay, so you have a narrow right of way down through there?
It's 50 feet in leagues, isn't it?
Yeah.
Just, just barely road width then.
It's south-facing. It will melt off in some, in the wintertime. It won't be too terrible.
Won't be quite as bad, but.
Don't give you the ability to swing out.
I, I think having the extra eight feet of pavement, though, might be just the advantage if you're coming down there with a, you got to think about fuel trucks. You know, people there driving, any, any, anything that's in and out of there, and it's just, I think that in, you're going to shoot yourself in the foot by making it smaller now, but.
Right. The question was maybe if we took care of that hill, even if we did 20 feet all the way down to the East Creek was a thought, or the 16, which we discussed also. And, but back to the question I had about the association that came to you later, within 20 years, wouldn't it be their responsibility to bring it to their standards before they?
It would be, right, but what my point is, the cost of doing it in 20, whenever you get this project, within the next year, say, is going to be considerably less than somebody else's, you know, down the road. We've just seen this.
Yeah, it's, it's all relative as years go by.
Yeah, my, my fear is to get, I mean, if you got a fire and you've got police cruisers there and you've got fire trucks there, you're going to bottleneck in there.
In, in, in a fire operation, because this is a rural area with no hydrants. You're running tankers down there. They need two lanes of traffic because they're coming and going. You know, it would be, it would hinder their operation because it, they would have to wait if something, somebody's coming. So I just, I see a safety issue there for that. Nobody wants a house fire. Nobody wants anything to burn, but these, these are things that some of us that have done this kind of stuff know that we've had, you have long, narrow driveways that people have that are like this, 1,800, 2,000-foot driveways, and two fire trucks can't pass, you know. And so you're building a road with five homes on it that, it's just stuff, just food for thought.
Is the 16 an option or is the 20s minimum?
I think you'd have to go with this, whatever the state standard is for a class three road. 20 feet, Dave? Yeah, 20, 10-foot travel lanes, which is, to me, kind of narrow. The, the state of Vermont used to have 12-foot travel lanes, and I think they've reduced those to 11 now, you know, to save pavement. So you can get away with 20 and be okay.
Would have shoulder anyway, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. The only one perk to building this to town road standards is the town will adopt that road, which means there's no need for association. The town will maintain that road out to the cul-de-sac. And there's, there's a process to adopt that road. But I mean, if it's built to our standards and there's five houses out there, I see no issue why we wouldn't adopt something like that.
Initially, or would we, I mean, at a later date?
If it was built to the town standards, you know, per what we put out there, they would take it, I think we'd take it all.
Yeah.
You guys put the road in, pave it, do what's done. Dave would keep an eye on, making sure it's done to what we wanted, and.
So you may, you may have, you know, in terms of selling your lots, you may have a, you know, you may be able to charge a little bit more for your lots that way to have it.
But paved as well.
Being on a class three road versus a private road could be more intimidating, you know. And it is a dead end. So the other thing is, is I don't know if the school bus has run up there, but there is a possibility of a school bus going down there and picking kids up.
Right.
So a lot of things to think about when initially doing it, and a lot of headaches to be avoided. I think if you just, you know, it's.
I definitely see, I definitely see both sides.
Yes, for sure.
I know, I'm sure you want to narrow things up so you can not have to spend a fortune on asphalt and gravel and dealing with wetland buffers and all that, for sure. But I think if you do build it to town standard, you know, I think longevity-wise, in looking to the future, you'll have a better neighborhood out there.
The only thing you're not going to be able to do is meet the grade. Yeah, it won't be able to meet the grade, but there, there's just no way to, I think, I, do you know what the standards are, Dave, for the town for grade? Less than 8%? Eight, somewhere's in there.
I was thinking it was 8, but.
You know, McKinley Avenue must be like 20? Yeah, we got some.
I could, I could rattle off a few.
Yeah, we got some steep spots.
A couple I came down backwards.
Yeah, so a, a good, a good straightaway like that, south facing, I wouldn't see a huge. That, that will be a big plus to that.
Huge issue.
But.
So you're saying that, that it still could be possible that town would take it over if that grade doesn't meet?
Because we have in the past,
Yeah.
we would have a hard time saying no. You're gonna do everything you can to minimize that grade. You're gonna do whatever you can there, there's, within physics and scientific fa- fa- factors and other than building a bridge to the end, you know, that's.
Dig and.
Yeah, so we're not gonna do it, but if the rest of it is, we've took over Amanda Place. And that's wicked steep.
Yeah, there is quite a dip in it right now that once it's flattened out, it's gonna give us that slope. I think you've said.
Just, you know.
Yeah, the, the deviation requirement in the, in our ordinance says, um, you can get a deviation if it can be shown that strict adherence would cause undue hardship because of unusual site conditions. So I'm looking at this and thinking you may have something with the grade if you can flatten it somewhat, but you might not have anything with the width. You might not be able.
Yeah, and for the safety of the people that are gonna build on those lots. You know, if there's a fire, we have to do that.
Boys are gone.
Yeah.
Yeah, and
They're going.
And we don't want our trucks destroyed. They're pretty, pretty expensive and.
Yeah, operating a tanker shuttle on a narrow road like that could be.
Right.
You don't, yeah, you gotta lay five inch in.
Or you're gonna lay five inch from the, you know,
From the.
Eighteen hundred feet from the cul-de-sac, which is.
Sucks.
It's doable, but.
It's easy to lay out. It sucks putting back on.
Right.
Done that before.
I mean, so, where I'm just looking at stuff that Kurt and I are kind of.
One nice thing about that road now, at least it's not built up. There's not ditches on either side. It's, it goes wider either way. We'll have to have the expense to dig it and gravel it and put a good base on it, but unless the snowbank's really high, there's room, plenty of room on either side of the road, most of the whole length. To get another vehicle around, especially in, in the, uh, you know, the good season. But, uh, so there's that, except the hill, which would be tricky.
But follow up question to, um, the conversation about potentially the town being able to take over the roadway. Um, the stormwater permit application that we've filed obviously addresses impervious area off of the roadway as well as impervious area off of the homes. And the, the primary system that's been designed is going in this location and addresses impervious area from this portion of the development. There's another system designed on Lot One that addresses or, or collects and manages the stormwater off of this section of the roadway. How would something like that play into the town taking over the roadway? Would it mean transferring those stormwater permits to the town or would those stormwater permits need to retain, be retained under the landowners or an association?
Would this be the same as Windmere?
I'm thinking, but we wanted to make sure, we, we needed to make sure we understood where the easements were. So that's another whole thing in there because you are, you would have some easements and.
Where you get stormwater, so.
And, and I would say that, you know, in this one, we've been, I don't know, four or five years now looking at one, the Windmere subdivision where they want us to take it over, but we have no idea what's under the road. So if you could do as-built certifications, if you put anything underground or, or even for how you build the road.
And so where utilities.
Where the utilities and stuff.
Yes.
So that kind of, um.
Yeah, the big things have a set ads built plans.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I made a note, Nicole. I will send you our ordinance which details what be required to take over a road. So
Yeah.
as you're looking at it, you can just check these off and put them in a file so that way they're there and you know what it is going into it.
The, the stormwater thing is
I think newer issue that we're starting to deal with.
Yes, we are.
If you have to obtain easements onto the lots where they're going, or there's an easement there prior to sale of a lot, that easement would have to be transferred to the town. And then the town, I would say, would take care of them from there. I think that's kind of the way that, you know, if you put it out there and it's on private property and then it needs to be maintained and there's no easement, then there would be difficulty. So you gotta think about some of that stuff, even as, you know, I know you, you're talking in association right now with, with five stakeholders probably, um, but.
There, there will still be an easement for the roadway because it crosses over individual.
The, the stormwater is new. Stormwater stuff is new. Um, yeah, that's. You don't have any of the other places we have where you're, you guys are working on stormwater stuff that you can.
We have that one up on, uh, Windridge. We got that one too.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and that's actually off, you know, that's like on pri- there's an easement to private property. So I think that's all.
You gotta wanna go there to get there.
We do have, um, Andre's, um, last name escapes me. And he does our, he's our consultant for stormwater things, so you might wanna check in with him.
How that works.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, seems a little more of a logistics than.
Yeah.
About the design.
And Planning Commission Chair, Barb, noise pulling.
Um, yeah, we had, uh, one of your developers come to the planning commission for a year ago. And you were talking about, one of the things was the wastewater permitting. Where does that stand?
For this project? Yeah, the, the wastewater permitting is in place for this project.
Have it?
Yes.
I, I wasn't involved in that. It was, um, Bernard and Jervis.
Yes.
Designers.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jason.
So, so that.
That's good with all the wetlands there.
There's a lot of areas that are not wetlands, but we, we do have to cross through a wetland buffer because of the crossing that's using the existing crossing that's at the, uh, East Creek.
Where you have to cross, you're gonna need some kind of a bridge or culvert or something, right?
Culverts there and already.
Already in place. So does maintaining the twenty foot road adversely affect your project to cross there?
I believe there's enough width to make that.
Yeah.
Right now is a seventeen foot six set of posts where there's a gate. That's gravel from edge to edge now.
Right.
Twenty's not much farther. There's four and a half or five feet on the east side and maybe about six on the west side, so. Go it up. It's just, we're an impervious area going through the wetland.
Yeah.
It's snug and we'll put guardrail in on either side.
Yeah.
So you have a, you have a flavor from us. We have quite a long agenda, so.
Yeah, we really appreciate your time and your.
Thank you for coming in and giving us a heads up early. This when the last one we dealt with was what, tw- twenty years after the fact? And that's not easy.
See, maybe we'll head off some of your future problems.
Well, I didn't think you'd say you'd take the road over, so that's maybe a good.
Well, it, it, it's worth looking into as you're building it.
That's for sure. For a neighborhood without five homes, at that point, there's a tax base enough to warrant the town taking.
Straighten out that hill. Maybe Fred, you could use some fill.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, folks.
Have a good one.
Take care.
Okay, so Barbara Noise Pulling, Town Planning Commission Chair. Good evening.
Good evening.
Feeling better?
Yes.
You were under the weather last time we met, so.
Yeah. It was mild, thank goodness. Um, remember the Housing Navigator program?
Oh, yes.
Survey that went out, so, yeah, um, Logan says he has like seventy plus responses
Good.
from the town. So he was hoping to maybe like end the survey and, um, start looking at the results.
From the town.
From the town.
Wow, that's really good. Is this the one? Or is this a different one?
That's a different.
This is the fire pit one, okay.
That's for the regional plan.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so th- this was the housing, just the, you know, tell us what type of housing is needed, what sites? And so there was a, a good amount of input about sites. A lot of people mentioned, uh, the mall, the Diamond Run Mall, but, um, so if you would, Logan's gonna go through with the information and if you would like the planning commission, the, the town planning commission um, to kind of collate that and, and present the select board the results, we'd be glad to do that.
Yes, please. Yeah. Um, what I found useful in it were the different types of housing that I'd never heard of before. So it was a bit of an educational thing too, and you had diagrams to kind of explain what they were, so. Um, I couldn't quite see them where they would fit in town, but I was glad to have some creative options that, that maybe the town should be considering, so.
Yeah, a lot of options between single duplexes and like a multi-multi.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good, folks, okay with planning commission crunching the survey numbers and coming back with a report? Good?
Okay.
Yes, please.
Okay. Um, I don't have much else. I did notice the short-term rentals was on the agenda.
It is. And okay, do, uh, do you folks, would you like to take it up now while Barbara is here?
You should probably get through some of this other stuff before we maybe put a bunch of time into that.
Can you stick around for a while?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
A lot of paperwork sitting on this desk.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Barbara. Mike Rowe, Town Rec Director.
Evening, how are you?
Hi, good.
Um, I don't have much, obviously, though, thanks to Dave. Everything's ready to go when the grass starts to grow tomorrow. Um, and the weather looks wonderful, so that's awesome. Uh, just kidding.
Have you given up on the skating rink?
No, it's still there. We might swim in it. It's deep. Deep enough, thanks. You gave me that. It's there. If it freezes again, yeah. Then maybe like three days, it could actually go on it, but it's a great service that some people have been able to use, so. Mother nature has not been nice for some sports for the winter. Um, we're transitioning to baseball. We had our league-wide baseball meeting last night. Um, so people can sign up for that now. That will start around the first of April, which is less than a month away almost right now. Um, and so that means everything, summer and spring will start to happen quickly. So other than that, I don't have much. The only two questions I have were, we did set the date for the townwide celebration, which I believe is the twenty-fourth, which will be the last swim day.
Right.
Because actually I go back to school on the twenty-sixth, so yes. Um, and the kids come on the twenty-eighth. I can't believe I'm saying that, having it ended yet, but yeah.
That's because we could get our.
DJ.
Yes, that day.
All around the DJ.
Yeah.
Um,
We're gonna do stuff.
Which is fine. So then that leads me into, and I haven't heard much, and I know it all depends on the budget passing too, but the fireworks, doesn't that usually contract come up at some point and are we?
We already have. Yeah.
Now, are we doing it on the townwide celebration? Are we doing it on Fourth of July?
Townwide celebration.
You throw me in the loop, so I had no idea. So that's why I was asking. So it's, we push that off from the fourth to.
It's not gonna be the fourth. It's gonna be townwide celebration.
Love it. Great idea.
Yeah.
Um, other than that, I don't have much. Um, unless you guys have something, my only other thing is, you know, figuring out the land thing up at the park. That's my only other.
Yeah.
Um, we are.
I got two things done for tonight's meeting, but that was not one of them.
That's okay. So maybe the next one, that might be one of them.
Well, it could be one of them.
Starting point.
Yeah.
So Bill, um, for the, the grant application for the PACIF, I think that's on your, in your folder. We um, do it every year or we try to. Dave usually gets a bulk of it for his stuff. It's a fifty-fifty match. Um, we're looking to expand the, update the camera system and expand the cameras up at Northwood. Uh, my goal is to put one, actually two, one as you're coming into the park. The pole would essentially be right around behind where the welcome sign is on the hill. Uh, looking into or looking at the tennis courts, basketball courts and the playground with our increased activity of people, I think it's just a smart move to do that. And then we can add a camera to the traffic that's actually coming into the park on that same pole. Cause we're getting, there's a lot of things to go up there, which is awesome, but then you have all the other issues that are coming. So Bill put together this proposal for the grant, um, to help us kind of bring everything up to snuff or at least get a little bit more protection up there at the park so that.
So this is number five in your packet. It's your numbered. H, okay, so I'm going by what Phil's got. Okay, I've got the original, so, um, there's two parts to it. The first is a highway department request um, of six thousand ninety dollars and it is for oh, tracking, um, highway vehicles in real time. So it's kind of a safety thing, so we'll know where our road crew is. And in real, no, no, and, and I remember this because when, before you came on board and we had a, a period of time when Byron wasn't in and I got a call from one of our highway crew and he was going to go out alone with a chainsaw to cut up some trees in the middle of the road. That made me very uncomfortable because we, you know, that's just way dangerous and this will alleviate that kind of a problem. We'll know where the highway crew is and can be safe. And the other part of the passive grant application is for the cameras that Mike Rowe was just mentioning. So if you're ready to vote on that, um, I would entertain a motion and it looks like there's one signature line, so.
This is, um, I'm just, I'm a rec one.
Is it on both?
Are you asking for a motion?
Are we doing it as a combined?
Both. There's a rec one and a highway. Highway one was in your, in your package.
So are we voting on both at once?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I have a question then for you then, Dave, on this one. So these say, um, over here, this is for one year, each of these. Is this like a subscription deal or is this for actual hardware or?
It is a subscription for monitoring service, I guess.
So does that mean that each year we would have this cost going forward?
So it, it, it would be for two years if we get it. So this, this service is actually through T-Mobile. And it's, I talked to Wade Mashore, who is, uh, one of our adjusters, and he, he said, Dave, we, I talked to him about being able to get this as part of the grant. And he went back and they had a discussion about it and a town has never applied for this type of service using the grant. So he said, put it in and write justification and we'll review it. So it would give us the ability to at least get the first year. We could apply for annually if, if they, if they approve it, we could apply for annually. If they say, if they decline the, to cover this as part of the grant, we are not obligated to take this service. That's, that's the price if we take the service. But we could move forward if we get the grant, if we wanted to.
Uh, so then it's possible we get it for the one year and then they deny it the second year and then we have to put it.
That, but it. That is a possible scenario, yes. But, so that price is the six thousand is for vehicle monitoring and, um, it, it does a bunch of other stuff, other than just location, but, um, it also gives cameras for in, inside the truck and outside the truck. That's a, so it's both those services um, are part of that proposal.
Which pleasure.
Oh, second about our highway budget in the future.
It wa- it could be written into it if they like it. I mean, they could do this for a year and not like it.
My basic thought was, um, dash cams was really what, you know, I mean, there's so many on the internet, you can look at all these knuckleheads that are running into plow trucks. And it's everywhere.
Yeah.
You know, if you don't have something to say, you know, this knucklehead ran into my truck and the truck driver is at fault ninety percent of the time. So that was kind of how we started having this conversation, when if I can put dash cams in the trucks to cover us from them.
Yeah.
So them.
Do you wanna vote on them together? I knew that we approved both of these requests for.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the cameras for Northwood for rec and the camera system in the highway trucks for the highway department. Any further discussion? Oh, and is somebody gonna authorize me to sign for the town? Is that part of your motion?
That's part of my motion, that we authorize the chair to sign.
I did hear that. Okay, very good. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
If they turn this down, we come up with a new plan.
Yeah.
This isn't a given.
This is creative.
So some years it's, they've had more or less of some years, but this, this is something brand new and, and we was like, no one's ever asked for it before, but I think the justification, you know.
When you take it from Dave's perspective, they're out plowing and somebody runs into the truck and you've got video evidence that said, yes, we were clearly run into not being the runner into her.
There's the name for the next truck.
Cool.
Okay. Any other business for Mike Rowe? This is a little bit off, but that's okay.
No, it's okay. Anybody have any questions or anything? All right, thank you.
Okay. So you must be Dave Sears from the highway.
We want to talk about dash cams?
All right, what you got?
Okay, so since the last meeting, we've been out three times. We have somewhere between two hundred and three hundred tons of salt left in the building and we got a little over about twenty-one hundred dollars left in the budget. Hopefully, we don't need any of that. Contractor's been called twenty-seven times out of their forty, so. Probably be looking at them Thursday morning and it's in the forties and fifties next week in rain, so, I don't know, we'll see. I put the paving bid out for FY twenty-five. That hit the contractors over the weekend. I got a couple of calls earlier this week. I got, kind of got us on the tentative list for the spring paving, where we've got what we're gonna do. This, and this will be paid for out of the town line, road, grant money that we got back. So we're, we don't have a date yet, but we, we're on the list. Somewhere in your stuff, you've got some stuff you need to sign for the state, for the class-two grant, that's ready to ship as soon as I get the rings of fire jump through, they would have to jump through for the state.
We have certificate of compliance for town road and bridge standards and network inventory. Would that be? Referring to? We, the legislative body of the town of Rottland certify that we have reviewed, understand and comply with the town road and bridge standards passed and adopted by the select board on, and there's a blank. I guess we need to fill that in, don't we? With today's date.
We have this somewhere. So what, what was the date?
When we adopted the street sidewalk ordinance, we adopted the road.
Okay.
Gotta be here.
Four, okay, I'll fill that in. We further certify that our standards meet or exceed the minimum requirements of the state-approved template. And we further certify that both are checked. We do and do not have an up-to-date highway network inventory. Why are both of them checked?
Which one should be?
I would say we do, but.
They shouldn't both be checked.
Okay, so I'll just cross that. We do. All right, and one other thing we have to certify too, which is part of this. We, the legislative body, certify that the funds raised by municipal taxes are equal to or greater than a sum of at least three hundred dollars per mile for each mile of class one, two, and three highway in the town. So I'm pretty sure our highway budget is more than.
Exceeds three hundred dollars.
I think it probably does, yeah. How many, how many miles do we have?
Fifty. Four and thirteen, so sixty-seven.
Okay.
So we're at about four hundred, right? Right, roughly four hundred dollars per mile.
Okay, all right.
So I'd move that we.
And we all get to sign.
Yeah, I see that, that we sign both of these documents presented to us.
Motion's been made, and a second, any further discussion?
We supposed to have expenses on page two?
Yeah, we have income, we don't have expenses. Perhaps we should have expenses.
I, I guess I missed that.
Okay, yeah. When do we have to get this done?
Has to be for the grant to be submitted by April fifteenth, so we, we have time.
We have time, okay, so why don't we, with your approval, table this? You can add the information needed on page two, so I'm gonna leave this in the packet, okay. Ten close, but we just can't quite do it. Yeah, almost did. All right?
Okay.
Anything else?
Well, we have stuff. Mike Penn had touched on it, we brought in all of his toys and serviced them the last couple of days. So he's ready to rock when the snow hits or the snow goes and the grass grows. We did burn a brush pile today, made that thing go away.
Did you tell our town fire warden?
I certainly did.
Okay, good.
You know, that's an interesting place up there because the requirement for me to approve that is not through Forest and Parks. It's through the air quality people, this division, that, it's a whole different thing, but when they wrote these permits up for municipalities to have a burn site. They included it, or they made it part of that, that the fire warden had to approve the burning. And when I had a problem up there, I got Forest and Parks involved and what I found out was they have nothing to do with it. It's actually their pollution control people that issued these Act two forty-four permits for municipalities. But they thought since the towns had fire wardens, it'd be another good thing for them to do. Anyway, but these guys have always been, the highway has always been right on top of making sure it's done right.
And I, I've seen Christmas trees go up before and I refuse to have one in my house because of it. And that pile went up like a Roman candle. It was like whoa. The weather and everything, I figured we're gonna, now we're gonna fight to get that thing going and it was not a fight. The post-road sidewalk, I got some stuff that I gave to Rob Hudson, who owns the house there right next to the school. He wants to, we got, we gotta put a retaining wall in there.
Yes.
So I sent some, some samples and stuff to him and let him make his decision, so we're moving forward with that. Which we're probably gonna have to build a little bit of a retaining wall down on the school property also, where it drops down over real steep there, so. We'll make it all look pretty pretty. And the new highway truck, the new one ton was delivered. We got the signs and the radios, signs on it and the radios in it, radio in it yesterday. And it's currently at Earl's Truck Repair, getting a plow and a Xander and strobe lights and all the fun stuffs.
So we just.
And we paid for the, how do they get the signs to stay on? How do they make the signs stand? Are those glued on or, right here, the signs on the doors?
Awesome graphics did them.
Yeah, so they're, they're, they're not magnetic.
No, 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 they're, they're on.
Cause I know a couple of people that had magnetic signs and they put them on the door.
The guy that was doing the install said he was looking at the, the fire pickup, the Ford F-one fifty or three fifty up there and he goes, boy, I wish I could put decals on that cause I've got these clips with magnets. He goes, but I put them on these truck and they just fall on the floor.
But it was funny.
Okay, anything else?
That's what I've got.
Okay, anything else in the packet? I don't think so.
We have no highway. Was there something we were supposed to do from the last meeting highway that we missed?
Yeah, JP Sidewalk, well, it's sort of There's a whole report on that.
Okay, cause we had to pick a project manager and
Yeah. Yeah.
And it sounded like it was gonna get very interesting, so.
Yeah, it does.
There was some, there was some idea given at the highway and I, then I was like, did they, did we actually?
They figured it out early on, that's not something they wanted, so.
Well, we tried.
Yeah, I know.
We addressed it. So, all right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Dave.
Okay.
Oh, one thing. The bids for the paving are coming in March something, to be open in March twenty-fifth. You guys wanna do a committee meeting for that?
Yeah, probably. I think that's what we did the other time.
So I got it, I got it set for the twenty-fifth, March twenty-fifth at nine.
Monday. Okay, perfect.
And somebody does a little chart and you tell us which is.
Depends on if we're still on the same committees, comes the twenty-fifth.
You wanna be? I don't think Matt wants to be on personnel. All right. Marcia Choffey, head lister.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, Marcia.
I am going to be very brief because you have a full agenda this evening. I just wanted to let the board know that we have a fully executed contract with Gail Gantek of GNK. And Bill has a copy for his files and we also have a copy in the Lister's office with the with the additions that the board approved at the former meeting. And she agreed to all of it, so. And also, all the business personal property schedules and inventory lists have gone out. Believe it or not, it went out last Thursday and I've already got about six or seven six or seven people that have already turned their declarations in, so. It's, it's, it's gonna move fast and we are definitely going to be processing as many of the declarations as we think that we are able, able to process, other than the, you know, more difficult ones, but other than that, that's about it.
Okay, any questions with Marcia? Good news and I'm glad Gail signed, so.
Yep, we're, we're on board and we're also been working with the state. Namely, Nimerick and with Gail's consultant, John Erblin. So that if any problems, you know, erupt in June after John is gone. Chris Muley has assured us that we have his full you know, full help to get over any kind of problems that we may have in the future.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I have one question. Marcia, I have a question. Could you provide for us the amount of tax revenue that the personal property generates for the town?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, I just curious, I'd, I'd like to, you know, if you could do that for us, please.
Sure, that's easy. I can have that for you for the next meeting.
Okay, that'll be fine.
Or I can send out an email, you know, depicting what the current, you know, as you know, the municipal tax rate is only point two one two seven per hundred. So even with that, we generate quite a bit of tax revenues for, for the town.
Okay. Any other questions of Marcia? Okay, thank you, Marcia.
Thank you.
And Chris Clark, town fire chief.
Hi there, just one thing tonight. Hopefully on your desk, there's an application on there to approve for Bryce Hebert. Town resident, seventeen-year-old junior member. So if you guys can approve it, I will let them know we can come.
Okay. And he's Oxy Oak Drive, so. Okay, so is there a motion to approve Bryce Hebert as junior firefighter? Motion is made and seconded to approve, any discussion? If not, I think we can all sign. All in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? So it's unanimous. And welcome to Bryce.
I will let them know, thank you.
Yeah. Any, any questions for our town fire chief? Nope. They're quiet because they're signing, Chris. All right, Carrie Clark, town clerk and treasurer.
I'm here.
Okay.
See, Brian talked a little bit about what I primarily had tonight. Just want to remind everyone that Tuesday is town meeting day. Monday night, we go over things at the school, seven o'clock. Election starts seven AM the next morning at the polling places, town hall and the school. We had a BCA meeting and we have all of our election workers set up and ready to go. Again, this is voting on the ballot, I'm sorry, on the budgets and also the presidential primary candidates. This will be determining who will be on the ballot in November for president. Let's see, I think that's pretty much all I have. Is there any questions?
So I think beginning at seven, the school goes first.
If we're following what we did in January, that sounds like that's what we did.
Okay, and we should just quickly go through who's gonna cover what parts of the budget. I think pretty much, well, weather permitting, I think Kurt will be with us this time. So Mary and Joe will do the general budget. Matt will do the police budget. Kurt will do highway and Sharon, fire and rec. Is that okay? Sound us fine? All right, very good. Okay, so seven o'clock at the school. Anything else for Carrie? Really quiet tonight, okay, that's it. Oh, wait, Carrie, we did have a question. Carrie and I have been looking at a directive that she got from the Vermont Department of Taxes that as a town and an employer, we need to start beginning July first collecting the childcare tax, which is a payroll assessment. We don't have to decide anything now, but eventually we will have to decide whether the town will pay all of the, the employer's share, which is the payroll tax, which is point four four percent. It's, so it's less than half a percent, let me put it that way. Or whether we split it with our employees because the law allows us to, them to pay a quarter of it, which is point one one percent and us as the town to pay the balance, which is point three-three of one percent. So we don't have any numbers, Carrie and I have, she made me aware of it. And it's something that we will have to decide on before the payroll beginning July first, but just a heads up on that. New tax coming. Anything you wanted to add to that, Carrie?
It was, in my opinion, just a little concerning, I think for any employer who didn't budget for this. And I mean, with anything new comes the positive and the negative to it. There are some people that agree with it, there are some people that don't, but it's something that sounds like we're going to have to do. Essentially, what it is, is we're putting money in, we're giving the state money to put aside for people to pay for childcare. So we're going to have to decide how much of that is going to come out of, like Mary said, out of the town and how much of it is going to come out of the employer. There are certain amounts that are no less than and more, no more than, but I'm hoping to hear more about this in the future. I've put questions out to VLCT. questions out to V L C T, I've asked Nimrek, um, I have not gotten any clear answers yet. Which was kind of disappointing because I'd like to think about this ahead of time and not actually have to worry about it after the fact. Um. Also, this has nothing to do with what I'm, what we were just saying, Mary, but there is a liquor license, it's not a liquor license, like permit or something on your desk um, for tobacco permit, I guess.
And Matt's got a question for you.
Sure.
Yeah, on that tax, could you run some numbers for us on what the range of cost is gonna be because
What it would be if we paid for it all?
Yes.
Or if we paid the thirty point three three, right?
Or if we pay a quarter in the.
Assuming. Assuming budgets pass and we're basing it on, you know, what, what people's salaries are gonna be.
Right. Quickly, I, I just was curious, so I was waiting for an answer and decided to roughly put my salary in to see how much I would be giving the state for childcare, even though I don't have children in childcare. Um, and uh, it's going to be like two hundred and sixty seven dollars a year based on my salary, so if we take that and we roughly look at each one of us that's making roughly around what I'm making, it adds up. I know it doesn't sound like a lot at first, but it does, it adds up.
It just again, we haven't budgeted for it. Um, so we've got to find room in our existing budget to pay for it, which I don't think is gonna be a difficulty, but we just need to be thinking ahead a bit, so.
If it's pay, if it's based on the gross salary for each employee, you could take what we've allocated for each employee, add them up and you get your percentage and that would give you the total the town would have to come up with, or less a quarter if we give some of it. But, but it's interesting because even though that's a new tax and I know they're gonna tax it, as this is statewide that would not take care, the amount Carrie's paying would not provide childcare for one child for one month.
Right.
Not even close.
Yeah.
My, my daughter officially said that childcare was now more than their mortgage payment.
Well, some, some people go to work and when they pay for childcare, there's not much left.
Right.
If it's a single mom, they're hurt.
I mean, this is why nowadays there are two people working in every household, if there's a two people, and, and heaven forbid, there's only one. And you ha, and if you don't have any extended family that can help with childcare, you're in dire straits, so. There's good and bad to it. I just, I'd be interested in how they're gonna distribute, how you're gonna be eligible for.
Well, from what I understood, it's everybody that has childcare gets to do this, which doesn't, I mean, I don't have a problem with a single mother working. Getting.
It's gotta be some kind of percentage that, that if you are in tougher straits, you get more and if you got at some substantial income with two family members working, you would get some, but maybe not as much, but if the state's involved, it'll be messed up.
Yeah, from what I understand, the state is saying it's going across the board to everybody.
Well, more to come on this, um, stuff that we can't necessarily fix, but we'll crunch the numbers on what we have to pay in.
Legislature let up there that make these rules would think about this stuff at budget time, not after budgets. They all know that budgets are done in the fall and early winter and you vote autumn in the spring, so now we're two weeks or month away and oh hey, here's some more money you gotta spend next year.
Yeah. Yeah, that word didn't get out very well. So um, Carrie did reference a uh, request for a tobacco substitute endorsement and this is for J W Sandry Inc. And the chief isn't, the chief of police isn't here, so I can't really ask him, but this is not alcohol, this is a tobacco substitute request for Do you know, do you happen to know if this is a renewal, Carrie?
I think it is. I was looking uh, closely why that was the only one that came through. Usually they have uh, licenses that come through, so uh, I was just a little I, I don't ever hear anything um, negative about that place, just it was just different how it came through.
Right, so is there a motion to approve? Motion is made to approve, seconded, discussion?
Definitely approve them for alcohol.
We probably did, but I think they might have missed this is my guess, because this is tobacco substitute endorsement and I think we did a tobacco endorsement. Yeah.
Didn't know you needed a separate license to sell the fake stuff.
So if there's no further discussion, all in favor of the J W Sandry Inc. uh, request, please say aye. Aye. Aye? Anyone opposed?
It's like having to have a liquor port, liquor license to sell duels.
Do you?
I don't know.
Trace them out in there.
There is a little bit.
You have to live for licenses.
I'm circulating that, so for signature, anything else, Carrie?
Um, Maple Angus called me and they are looking to file with the state to get a third class liquor license permit. I guess it allows them to sell, like hard liquor is what I'm understanding. I, I don't really know. Well, anyway, um, they're gonna go through the proper channels, but um, before they um, go ahead and pay the massive amount of money to do that, they wanted to know if it was um, if there were any concerns from the, the town in particular.
But what we do is, we check with the we check with the chief of police usually.
Right.
He's not here to ask him that question.
I'd like to get capping coke for my burger down there, so.
Yeah, if um, they're doing a uh, a function in the city is what Josh told me, um, and they are going to need this license in order to do that, but he wanted to know if he were to actually do it and have it for the long run, if it would be okay with the, the town. He would do the same thing as normal, he just want, he was almost like a a pre-approval before the actual.
Well, I would say like, have him get his application and, or call the call the chief of police and find out if there's any problem because he's the one we usually check with.
Right.
And then if there isn't, then he can do what he wants and you know how we usually deal with this.
Are the licenses good for specific location or are they, so he's talking about doing a function in the city.
Do they have to approve?
Well, I'm wondering if because it's in the city.
That's a good question.
They might have to have a license because I mean, we could approve them for all of town.
Right, but not for rotten city.
I don't think we can, so he, they may have to do some legwork, Carrie, to figure out what they actually need. They may have to go to the city to get a.
They may be able to get like a catering.
Catering.
Catering. No else. They cater all over.
Yeah.
From what I understand, Josh knows what he's doing. He just wanted to, I think, call all the places that might be affected. He's trying to do the right thing, so um, I'm gonna leave it up to him to make the next step anyway.
Yes, good, okay.
But that's all I have.
Okay, nothing more for Carrie? Fred has a question.
Carrie. Do you want to make a little speech on choosing or declaring the ballot for the presidential primary on Tuesday and the reason why?
Uh, elaborate a little bit. What do you mean?
Well, the, the primaries are, are controlled by the the Democratic National Committee and the Republican National Committee, not the state of Vermont, so you do have to which, which ballot you want. And that's the reason why.
Yeah. And you don't have to vote in the primary, you can refuse to take a, a a ballot for either party, but you can still vote in the town election. Oh, okay.
Chief's back.
Alright.
Carrie, Ed's here.
Oh, hi Ed.
Did you want to pose your question, although frankly, I hate previewing something, so.
We could just wait.
If you want to pose your question to Ed, go ahead.
I mean, I, I can, but so Ed, we were just briefly talking about, um, I got a call from Josh Butler for the Maple Angus, um, he's looking into doing a, I believe it's a third um, liquor license, a third class liquor license. Um, he's doing a function in the city and he's trying to do his I guess the word is due diligence, um, and make sure, he wants to go for the full license and he will do so. He just wanted to call us to see if ever there has been any issues with the two licenses he has before he goes and asks the state for the third one. And that's what we were talking about and Mary was just saying that maybe we should run it by you, but this is all like pre-talking to the state. I think he's already going for the license, so we'll just wait until the actual license comes through, if that's fine with you.
Okay, Ed has indicated that he doesn't know of any issues with Maple Angus on the other two. Okay.
They're awfully good people.
Yeah.
They're doing a fundraiser for the mission over there, they're gonna have a chicken barbecue.
Hmm, good.
Next Sunday.
Next Sunday.
Okay.
Go get me some chicken.
And Kurt likes their hamburgers, so.
Oh, their hamburgers are excellent.
Oh yeah, their steaks are pretty good too.
I'm not supposed to be eating any beef at all.
They have renovated a property over there.
They have.
Very nicely.
They have done an excellent job.
As of a couple of weeks ago, they can flush a toilet now. We got that, we got that all done.
Always an important milestone.
The septic system was struggling over there.
Okay, if there's nothing else for Carrie, we'll let her go. Thank you, Carrie, and we'll see you Monday night and then Tuesday morning, bright and early.
Yes, you will.
Okay. Next, Mike Delahanti, first constable is not available this evening. Uh, Ed Dumas, town police chief.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi, chief.
A little busy today. So we had this many calls, I haven't had a chance to several pages, not quite as many, Morvico Stoppes or Constable has been uh, on vacation, I think. Do you have any questions on what we have there?
Is most of it self as a city?
Yes, lots of it is, most of it. Yes.
Alright.
I have.
Well, Carrie's still on, have we received our payments for um, from the Cortina? For, uh, I know we got Januaries, do we get Februaries and sometimes they pay early, do we get Marches yet?
He just walked in today with the check for March.
Very good, okay, thank you.
I did get a call this week, reminds me, from Rob Evans, that was I believe it was Monday, called me, wasn't quite sure, uh they're having hearings at that point in time in Montana for the homeless situation. There's some, some other issue that we, I took up with the state police, doesn't need to be aired. And the other thing was, we've been having some difficulties with the uh what do you call them, solicitors at the plaza near the entrance where they go in and out, we've had a couple fights going on for territory. That and Route seven. And I've, actually Bill and actually Josh Charonzen, he had sent me things in the past, showed me a thing on uh a sign and I don't, you know, don't give to the uh.
Yeah, you have it on your desk.
Bill actually did that, thank you.
And is this at the entrance to the plaza?
I'd say put them anywhere in Rollin Town.
Well, what I would like to do, and I have to make a motion, that we formally talk to the owners of the plaza about changing the configuration of that entrance and exit.
So Bill had a conversation today, this week with Mr. Peter Elliott, I think it was. And I'm not privy to all that, we talked about trespassing and I'm not sure if we talked, if what Bill talked about as far as the entrance to the plaza. So I know we did talk about who owns that and who doesn't own that, right? There's always been a question whether it was the town, the state or the plaza.
We've skirted around this for eight years now I've been here and a number of years before that, so my proposal has been, and my thoughts have been, that we re could have, talk with the owners. I think the state's gonna get involved, but do away with that island, make the exit three lanes, a right designated right turn lane. The next lane would be straight to go up Sword Road or a left turn and the third lane would be left turn only and then you have the lane coming in. Um, in past discussions on this, we've been told the state doesn't like two left-hand lanes. But I can go down to four and seven and there's two left turn lanes, there's two uh, Route seven and uh, Strong's Avenue. So it does work. If, what this'll, this will solve numerous problems. It gets rid of the island for people to stand on and they no longer, they're gonna have to be in traffic, which I believe is a ticketable offense now and then that.
That's a citation.
That's a citation, so that's gonna be out. The other thing it does is it will double the amount of traffic that can leave the plaza at one time, because you have to leave a gap there so traffic can turn, turn down, cop down lanes, and now you'll have two left-hand turn lanes, one right turn lane, you can double the traffic. And this solves, and I believe there's enough footage here, that entranceway curb to curb to accommodate that. And I think it's time for a serious discussion with the owners of the plaza. Department, the State Agency of Transportation, the town, maybe we own that. I don't know who owns that intersection, but once we figure this out that, that's the cure to the problem. No place to stand, they're gone.
Let me also toss in, it's subject to an act two fifty permit, so you would probably have to do an amendment.
And if we have to go through that, that may be a.
Joey, they also before you turn to go up that, to go out.
Yeah.
They now stand there with a sign.
Right, and, and the thing is, now they're on private property, which is the plaza's property, so they could have them removed. Then it becomes their responsibility at that point, if they want to deal with it, or they can have our P D remove, I don't know what the thing is.
That's gonna take some time.
Right.
In the meantime, put the sign up. We could put a sign up and.
They'll hang your coat on.
I was talking to, it's like, remember I said, well, we should make plenty and we shouldn't make them any higher than the back of our pickup truck, this, that the police firehouse, so we can change it daily.
Put it high enough so they can't reach it?
There's a vandalism charge if they do.
Yeah, there's a, there's, yeah, there's something for defacing of signs.
I was coming out.
Sign has to be no lower than seven feet anyway.
Okay.
I was coming out of there. And I was just ready to turn and the guy that had been begging got into a BMW and drove away.
Oh yeah. Oh yeah.
Well, they make big money down there.
That's what we'll do for a living.
The ones that I see have a serious drug problem and they're down there, we're hungry, they may be hungry.
Oh, I've stopped and said, if you're hungry, our meals are at this time, this time and this time. You know what I got for an answer? An F-bomb.
They're not hungry for food, they're hungry for something else.
Right.
So I know it makes people feel better if they can give somebody a little money, makes their day, but in the long run, it's not really helping. Out much.
Actually, it makes people, this, this whole situation is making those of us that would help somebody out more cynical and less likely to give money to people that actually need it because the first thing you're thinking is, well, they're just gonna go buy drugs with it or they're gonna do this, you know, some, and, and I've had encounters, that's different locations, people come up and ask me for money and I just, I'm, I don't know. I, I, in the old days, I'd say sure, nowadays, it's like, no.
Joey, there's enough out, help out there for people for food.
Yeah.
For people for, for places to sleep that.
So this would be for the people who want to feel better about themselves by giving to somebody.
That's right.
If we had an organization or a fund that we could have it with a Q R code or whatever we can do to have them with their cell phone, because there is a digital age at this point in time, they can donate money that way. And uh, so do we have to get permission from somebody to put this sign there?
Well, we have to decide that we want to do it.
Right.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I do too.
Is this, where, where is this from? Is this from somewhere in Vermont? Because it's two one one.
Yeah, so we have to find some sort of.
I'm not really sure if it accomplishes that much, to be honest, for the for the cost and effort of doing it. I mean, I feel like people pretty much. Know and.
I just think people that would normally. Give to them because they're just good people. If they saw these signs. And you know, I ran a nonprofit for forty years, but and I'm not saying give to the mission, but there's plenty of agencies out there.
I would say um. Sort of broad based uh United Way of Rutland County.
That's right.
And have a QR code because that would be, they got a bunch of programs.
Although we don't get the United Way mon- money.
No, but lots of other organizations. Yeah. So what what's your pleasure with this? Do we investigate it? Do we oh? Send it to the police committee to look into?
Well, the police committee is here.
Are we either going to?
Oh, that one. Well, I make the motion that we put them up.
What do we need? Four of them? One for the end of Route four? And like three in the plaza?
Probably.
Dave orders signs. How much do these cost?
I don't know. I'd say probably between thirty five and fifty bucks. I'm not sure we can put one up at the end of the bypass without V trans.
You have to have V trans permission to put it there.
Yeah.
That's there right away. Or you go down. Go down and put the sign up and stick it in there and.
Yeah, I'll bet you a dollar it'll be there two, three years.
You go down and do it in the middle of the day when everybody's there watching and they think, you know what you're doing?
We'll make Dave do it and then he'll get in trouble, Sam. We'll be good. All right, so motion's been made to um purchase four signs. I guess we need to figure out who the agency is going to be. Wordings to be determined.
I like that.
All in favor, please. Is, was there a second?
Second.
Okay, all right. All in favor, please say aye. Not opposed, so, okay.
At least if anything, it shows. It shows people that we're trying.
Yes.
Right, because I've been yelled at by people. Why did you allow it?
Well, same.
We don't have any choice.
No, we can't stop.
Begging is allowed in the state of Vermont.
Or where? It's very obvious.
Anything more for our police chief?
Well, I don't have anything more, but with regards to my suggestion, I'd like to. Whatever we need to do to move, how how what whatever the next step would be to look into that. I don't know what that would be contacting the owners of the plaza.
I think they've they've got to. Because I think they they hold the permits. I think Bill's got to, Bill, Bill's got to start by contacting them. And and then probably V trans as well.
Well.
Because I'm not sure where that.
Well, then if, you know, and if it ends up being highways. You know, because that is kind of a highway thing and whatever. Because one of the questions that they're gonna ask you from the plaza down there is who's gonna pay for it? So we'll cross that bridge and we'll get to it.
So if we could put it on next agenda.
Figure out somebody to talk to and get the ball rolling. Yeah.
Got a guy.
All right.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, John Paul Fagin, town health officer, public safety building clerk and second constable. Good evening, JP.
Oop, that weren't good.
Sorry, JP.
You're breaking up all over the place.
We can't hear you. Yep.
That didn't work good.
No.
Did he drop something?
Okay. Bill is reaching out to you.
What the hell?
If you can hear us, JP, you're not coming through. Um you're really broken up and there is no coherent sentences.
And Bill just sent you a text.
He was here on the weekend. Tammy's funeral. They flew up for the funeral.
Okay, JP, you want to try again or no?
Don't think he can hear us. Hang on a minute.
Okay, well, we'll put that down as a valiant effort and we appreciate it, but we can't understand you. And we don't, you know, so.
We don't know if he's hearing this, but I will see something.
Okay, let's move on to Bill Sweet, town administrative assistant to the select board.
Good evening. All right. Can I quit trying? All right, so um few things left in your packet.
Hey, John, you're not coming through. What?
My coming through there either.
Well, I can, Mary, I can put him on speaker. Do you want me to do that?
You can try.
JP, you're on speaker.
Okay, great. I did. Uh so I was saying the roof is going on and then as soon as that's done, the foundation, the floor will be installed. Um so there and there are no issues and haven't been for a while, so things are proceeding nicely along the. Schedule that we were previously given.
Okay, good. Joe's got a question.
Joey's got a question.
Did, did you find out anything JP about the uh wall panels?
No, I didn't. Not yet, Joe. I will.
Okay, because I thought that the original schedule, they were gonna do them in February. But I noticed they put the plastic up, which makes me think there must have been a delay. Or something because that's what Ed had originally told me. So just curious.
No, the plastic was always going to be put up just as a temporary so that they could work inside.
Right, okay. Um the other thing to put on the radar is we had talked about this at the meeting that you and I had. With the project manager and Ed in Ed's office about that area of the lot where the tree is and. Putting any suitable fill from the project that's there into that big hole. Um I'd like that, you know, Fabian. Be made aware of it and maybe we could start talking about what that would entail and maybe some kind of a cost to. The town for filling that in or doing something so we can think about it while the equipment's there.
Yeah, the the minutes, the weekly minutes reflect that Fabian is aware of that and they will, but if you want to go further in terms of. Putting material in there that's not generated on site, I'm sure that people haven't talked to us about it.
Okay, because one of the things I'd like to know is if they came up with some kind of a, you know, once they've put whatever they have on site in there. Maybe some kind of a cost to the town, which is above and beyond the cost of the building to. Bring in some bank run material to fill that area up. Um I I would just be curious as to what it would be cost us.
Well, I I I think to your point, Joe, we'd probably save money if we had it done while we're on site.
Right. Yeah, so that that would just be something to get into the works with um VMS and Fabian and and just so. As a board, we can think about it in the next few months and. You know, after July first, we might have some additional funds from our capital improvement. I don't know that we might be able to. Put into that. Just that would add probably that would double the parking on site there if we did this.
Right, that well, you actually you you had to have that in mind from early on.
Yeah, okay. Thanks, JP.
All right, thank you.
Anything else for JP? Okay, thanks very much and thanks Sharon for setting that up.
Thank you, Sharon.
Yep.
Okay, Bill Sweet.
Hi, uh okay, so got a few things to go over. Um. We're talking before about the municipal project manager and we had discussed using the at the ready process. So. Uh after last meeting, I reached out to a couple of the three of the contractors or the firms that were on the list. Well, that's. I quickly found out that is not how this process goes. It is a little counterintuitive, but.
This is sorry for JP sidewalk.
JP sidewalk uh for procuring a municipal project manager to facilitate us going through this this project. If we want to use the at the ready process, there are six firms who are pre-approved. The, a selection committee needs to be established. The selection committee needs to review. Each of the six firms. And independently score them. Whomever the selection committee is, then needs to come together and determine a one through six ranking. We then take that list and bring it to the person at the state who is helping us with our grant contact. And he will likely say, yes, you're good to go with that list. If we go with number one, we then ask number one for a cost proposal. Listen, is there a cost proposal? If we say no, that's too much money and we go on to number two, we can never go back to number one. And so on and so forth. That is the process.
Is there any other process?
Yeah.
I'm glad you asked. The Regional Planning Commission is almost guaranteed to get approved and he was surprised. We didn't go that process because they are almost always the least expensive option. So. If we would like to go with the Regional Planning Commission option, there is a much shorter process to go through. And we don't have to do this. If we want to use that ready at the ready process, we have to do this square. We have to do a a square.
That's kind of a no brainer.
I'll accept any kind of motion.
I would appreciate.
We do, Bill. Remember, we did, somebody we picked, we did that process of going through all of the different ones and scoring them.
It was with Byron. It was a much smaller project, though.
I forgot what it was.
Yeah, I do too and I.
And we had to, we went through every one and you had like eight or ten.
Plus.
Content and you had to score them and who got the most points won.
Yeah.
So I guess the motion would be to solicit a proposal from the Regional Planning Commission for. Overseeing this project.
Motion's been made. Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded to solicit a proposal from the Regional Planning Commission. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Barbara, that was a ringing endorsement, by the way, the Regional Planning Commission, even though it may not have sounded that way.
I I had talked to Stephanie, who we worked with in the past and has been been great, and she is enthusiastic to work on this, so.
Good.
I'm sure she'll be happy to hear. And get a proposal from her, so.
You know, if we're gonna name it after JP, can't we maybe make him pay for it?
At least do the overseeing. What a great idea, but let's go with the Regional Planning Commission for a bit.
Let's leave him as. A Plan C. Um it it's it's a big project. It's and and it's a lot. There is the project manager scope of work is pretty substantial. It's it's pretty substantial, so um okay, so I will work on that. Thank you very much. Uh as Ed was talking about, I I had a chance to sit down with um one of the leasing. Um managers for the Green Mountain Plaza the other day after our personnel committee meeting and we talked for al- almost an hour. Um and we we did talk a lot about some of the issues down there. Um they are actively. Working on uh filling the Bed Bath Beyond space. And I didn't get the same line that I got what we get from. Others, but uh they're working on some remodeling down there. We we talked about the the whole thing, the the way out of the parking lot. We talked about the entrance. And I did look up a property map the other day and it looks like the actual V trans right of way comes in. And goes down and includes the island. So I think the island belongs to V trans. So, but that's a great idea. I mean, if if we, I mean, it.
But they don't plow it.
Nope. So I, we we don't know, so.
Because that's a big road. That's a.
It is.
Right away.
Yeah, so Pete Peter was great. I I've got his card if we, you know, but we can, we can invite him in, but he's he, they've got some projects to work on to, we'll do some remodeling down there to make some spaces. They're looking at. Uh he says the 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 tenants, there is no information that he has received that say any tenant has has any plans to go anywhere. So that's a really good, it's a, it's a a strong thing. Uh we did talk about the addressing in the plaza. Uh that, you know, it's 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 not exactly right. And what we need to do to fix it. And I said, we're not really in a hurry to make you make changes. I said, but if the opportunity presents itself. Through projects you're doing to make a change, that'd be the time to do it. So he's aware of that. We talked about even the even the uh the service road coming across in the back, that possible connection to Fair Road. Like we we covered a lot. He he is very, very nice to talk to. So I think he will be very happy to hear about the signs. He he's aware of that issue. And shared some frustration and he and Ed, Ed happened to walk by, so I grabbed him and he had a great conversation. So it wa- it was a really good. Uh a really good meeting, so um he's a, he's a great.
Matt's got a question.
Yeah.
So along those lines, I think it's been about a month since the mall was here. Perhaps we should ask him if he's got an update.
Yes, please.
Sure.
Maybe six weeks.
Yeah, that's about.
Ask him again.
He said August of two years ago, John.
I've heard that song before.
Either way, by the way, when I I sit in.
We'll keep our fingers crossed.
Every, once a month with the Ad Hoc Housing Group. And they show me stuff and they showed me some of the plans and that building was identified by the tenant that's going in there, maybe. So, yeah, there's there's stuff out there.
Yeah. That would be wonderful. Okay. Uh so if if I have anything more on that, I'll I'll let you know, but but yeah, he was, he was great and and and. He he learned, he learned a lot and I learned a lot, so there there's some, there's good, good conversation. Um I uh put on your desks some, we we talked a while ago about. Some of the nine one one address changes and what to do for ones we know are wrong, but don't necessarily want to change them right away. So there on your desk is an example of a couple that are real, real life examples um of two that. We know we're wrong. Um there's also, I I I was talking with, I got, I got Tyler back forth an email the other day. We we were going back and forth. And and there are some issues on, there's a couple of issues on Victoria Drive. There's a couple of issues on Sunset. Nothing major, but one of those, if. The opportunity presents itself, they'd be, they'd be beneficial to change, but but those two are two that are. Ones that are example of like sh- should be changed. The Ruth Avenue one is not terrible. It's the first house. On the right and it's kind of for a while, so that's not so bad, but the Cold River Road one is, it's a pretty far. Change, so we talked about.
The thought was to put something in with either the listers of the land records flagging this for when there is a a change in property.
Sending the letter and putting the cup, put a copy there, so we 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 talked about talking about it, so.
I don't particularly like that solution.
Because.
The board is taking a wishy washy stand on what we have said that if we're gonna make, we have made people change their numbers already. And we have. Kind of stuck to our guns on other things, recreation and different things, and if they're wrong, they should be fixed. And we shouldn't let them fall.
Can we just not?
You know, you either, we're either gonna take a stand that if we let one slide, we let them all slide. That's what Sharon said when we were talking about recreation. And we all voted unanimously to adopt those rules because if you let one slide, you gotta let them all. And I'm just saying. We let one slide, you gotta let them all slide.
I think if we're gonna get into.
And I think that. Yeah, we need to set an example that we've already done this. We've already made people. Change their addresses because they were wrong and looking for a way out that's. I understand the diplomacy and I understand trying to be thoughtful and I understand a lot of things, but it takes away from the board's credibility.
Bill, can you explain more on these particular ones, like what the, how? Was there something that caused this to come about or was a, were they mismeasured when the whole street was done? Are they out of order or what?
The these two in particular were were assigned incorrectly when they were done. So it was just a, like the Grover Drive example, that was measured wrong. So that's, so uh these are, these are longer standing ones. Uh there are some, there are some other ones. Uh which aren't as egregious. They're off by like ten. So he said, you know, that's, that's, that's a pretty minor difference. Um but these being like eighteen to fifty four is a pretty, a pretty sizable difference, but.
But there's not, like, if it's the first one on the street.
Right.
Is it ever likely to be an issue?
Probably not.
Could be another place going in.
Probably not. So so where there's, where there could be a case for waiting until the property's transferred, that would be that kind of case. But there there, those are very, very small examples. Uh we actually, one of the lots on Grover Drive, one of the last remaining lots. Uh on the inside corner near Regostas just sold and they needed to get a, they needed to get a number just last week. And JR Bullock's driveway is a perfectly measured number. That's six forty two and their driveway going right across from it, so that's six forty one. Like that was a done, perfect example of a, of a, of a correct number, so. Uh, you know, we, there are ones we know of, there's, there's some issues around there. Some that. Some driveways that have had a few buildings built and now they actually qualify to become a private road. So there's that case. We have, we have, we have a couple of those now too. So. There's a few different instances and it's, it's just a matter of. You know, how, how, how much we wanna, how, how much we wanna do and how, how far we wanna go.
Was the story on Cold River Road?
It's just, it's just measured wrong. It's just, it's just the bad, it's a, it's a.
It's just in the middle of other places or is it at the end of?
No, it's, it's, it's.
It's up on the hill.
On the hill says you're going, if you go to the Cold River Road, turn right toward Hubbard's. It's a second driveway, maybe on the left, second or third, it's on the left.
There's, there's some houses within.
Within. There's some houses.
Distance.
Well, there's, there's some numbers that are very close to the 1894, which are very far, very far away, like the number, the numbers are close, but the driveways are far like it, it doesn't, it doesn't make. Would, you know, when you're looking at it, that doesn't make sense to where it sits.
Well, I, I would prefer to do this in kind of a systematic way rather than take two.
Right. That's just, those are just examples. Like and I'm, you know, just, cause we, we talked about it and then it kind of just.
Yeah.
Fell, fell off. So this is just, these are some examples and, and, you know, working with Tyler, there's some, he's like, yeah, we, we should, these are something we should change. And there's some that are off by like five or six that. Really like, and, and like, there's a couple in, in Victoria Drive that are off by very small numbers that don't make sense to change because there's not going to be a change in the driveways.
At the end of the section.
The lower section. Yep.
Well, and there's big. Group subtag back there. That's not gonna, you know, if the measuring is wrong on that, there's not gonna be a place built on it. So.
There are some that are, I think, I don't think there's, there's none that are out of order, but the sequence is just. I don't know where the issues came from, you know, it's, it's just, they've just been there. So.
Well, this, this isn't worn for anything on our agenda. And I don't want to deal with it tonight because we got a bunch of other stuff. We really do need to do, deal with. Do we want to put it our, on our agenda for the next meeting? A systematic plan to address the discrepancies?
I think we should because we had such a, a kickback from people complaining about it. That at least we warn it. And.
Yeah. And, and let's do this. Let's pull the minutes from those meetings. So that we know, cause we did toss around some of these ideas. All right. So let's not rehash everything if we've already discussed.
Let's, let's not put it on a meeting when we have six million things to.
Please, yes.
I'll do my best.
That was, this was not on my list.
I, I know. And it's, it's, and it was more dear this to, just to, you know, make sure, make sure we keep, we keep talking about it. Cause there's, there are some issues that are bigger than others and, and, and these are, these are kind of some example of one that's one that isn't, one that isn't. So.
Okay. So next agenda.
Absolutely. So I did got the. Joe's favorite topic sewer, the usage for 2023 for all of our sewer accounts. There are four, there's not, there's nothing on your desk for this. There are four that are over. Not bad. One's. Three gallons, one seven, one's 197 and one is 4,573. So that would be the days in. And I think that's just a function of the, the use of the facility. Like it just, so it's over. So. Letters that I sent in the past have gone out and there's a couple that are repeat on here and, and, but. They'd be very good in the past. So nothing, that's, that's a, that's a big one. I expect I'll hear from them, but we'll, we'll see how that goes. So that's done. Did you want to warn a board meeting for after town meeting on Monday night?
Why?
We, we haven't, but if we wanted to, we should.
Well, we, we did that because.
To approve, to approve it last.
To approve what goes on the ballot. So we don't really need to do that. And this is. And a weekend between our two select board meetings. So there is, yeah, there's really no reason unless.
I just.
Something weird comes up and you know, and we have to approve something immediately. We can. Send out an emergency.
Too late to make changes Monday night.
That's right. We were talking about the town report. That's an interesting.
Yeah, I put it in the green folder. So.
So we spent about $1,100 on postage.
Okay.
To mail the town report. So the cost of the report wouldn't really change because we're still going to produce same number, just gonna be here. Maybe, maybe some less, but we, we, we spent $1,100 on postage.
How much do they charge us per unit to mail them? Do you have any idea?
I, I don't remember what it is. It, it, it by page and quite like we, we, I reduced the number this year because we didn't go through as many. So I got a few less. So I, I, I can, I have the contract.
I'd just be curious because if you send out that little flyer.
People would actually want them.
Would be the price of a stamp, I'm assuming those, or do they get a different?
Bulk rate. I mean, we're. We send out a lot of those. So.
I don't know if there's a rate on there.
Yeah, pre-sorted standard.
Yeah.
So.
We don't know what, we don't know what that is.
Take it, there's not a legal requirement.
So there, there essentially the legal requirement is what they sent out. You have to get the warning out. You have, there's things you have to get out. And short of that, if we don't get the report out so many days in advance, we have to publish it in the paper so many times. Like there's a. The, the, the getting out the town report was the better option for that.
And, and that's fine. And I just wanted to toss it out as what other towns do.
You know, yeah.
It was because of what other towns do that we increased the size of our town.
Yeah.
Now you can, but, but it's funny because some of the stuff that people have put in there, I was reading. The print is like, it used to be in the old reports and I was thinking, man, that's really small.
Yeah.
Cause, cause.
Yeah.
So we might want in the future, I know it'll change maybe the pages, but we might want to dictate a font size. So that the readability is there.
It's like the Supreme Court.
Well, the whole idea of going to a.
I've heard that comment.
The whole idea of going to the big book was so that we had the, you could read them.
Especially the school stuff, the school budget.
Well, I, the other thing I noticed is that the half of the town report is school stuff.
Yeah.
Or more, more than half.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Okay.
So there, there is a per page cost. So.
I, I understand that Billy. It's just that it, in the past, we have achieved our goal up until this year with the printing. Size and the readability.
Yeah.
This year, some of them are a little tough.
Okay.
And.
So what, 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 like, is there some, we may be able to, we may be able to change and, and it depends on what it is.
Cause there's some in there that are sideways.
Yep.
When you read them. And so I'm wondering if.
That's what, you mean, you probably mean the audit reports.
Yeah, some of that stuff.
Those are rough.
Yes, it is. Cause it's hard to.
I can, I can, I can make them bigger. It just, it would, so. Yeah, it becomes, there's a layout that.
We don't need a, we don't need an encyclopedia.
It would probably, probably double the pages of the audit, but. It wouldn't, it wouldn't drastically change the cost.
But did we miss a page at the end?
We missed a page right after our, but all of our budgets.
No, but at the end, there, there, isn't there usually a page with all the phone numbers and stuff?
Yep. I, I, I put Rooster there and I forgot the contact page. I really do. Yeah. There hasn't changed. I know, I know. I, I know.
Yeah, but oh well.
He apologized.
Oh God. You know, ours, we, we got, we got ours in the mail at home and I walk inside and I said, I said, Rob, I said, I said, we've got, it just feels a little light, like it feels like a missing page. It feels like it's missing a page. It, it haunts me like it really does. Like it just, so I was so happy to get it out and it just, oh, just, it haunts me.
We know what year it is. That was an easy, that was, you know, when you think about it, it usually says right on the cover and I saw that and I said.
Gosh.
But I wrote it online. So I know.
Okay, that's, that's good. All right. So.
You can report on that at the.
I'll have plenty of copies for Monday night. Don't worry. So on your desks, you all have a brand new binder. Each of the departments in the building and outside the building also have the same thing, appropriate label for whomever they are. So that is a current copy save for the three that are on your desk of all of our town policies. So there's one we just did the other day, who, all, all ones. So these three are not in there. So. The three I, I, I put on your desk for tonight have very little to almost no substantive changes. And that was why I kind of did three. Social service is mainly just to give it a, a refresh and, and. To mainly to have, to see if there's anything you wanted to review or change.
Okay. So this is the, I don't know what number it is here, but it's social servants agency appropriation policy. This tells people who want to put that special item on the ballot. How they have to do it. And if they are requesting an amount that is, that they've done in the past and it's not more than 10% more. Then all they need to do is send in a letter, but they have to send it no later than 60 days before the day of the meeting. And that hasn't changed. You were going to tell me, is there any other changes here?
That one, there is not.
Okay.
What I also like about that, I, I was, and there's a couple of agencies I sent this to this year because they had questions about it. Also details how they. Get their fun, get their funds.
Right.
So this answers questions on both sides of that. So that's very helpful.
So when they get paid?
Yes.
Okay. So is there a motion to re-adopt our social service agency appropriation policy? Second, motions made. Is there a second? Thank you. Um, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Thank you. So if it's, Simon's the copy areas and you know, if y'all notice your.
Here, you guys.
Already have three hole punches in them. So you can just, if you'd like to, or if you'd like new copies.
You should copy them once all of the, we, all, all, all of us have signed and then stick them in the folder.
So a, as, as we approve new ones, even on there, all, all of the, all of the binders will get updated. I'll give, provide copies to each of the.
Okay. The next policy is the meeting room use policy. We do have one in effect. It notifies people how they can reserve space in the Center Rutland Fire Station and the Town Hall. There's, I think you told me that on this one, the only changes were the. Contact people like Chris Clark instead of Frankie Choffey.
And there was no adoption information for, for this one. So now there will be.
Okay.
Or would be.
Yeah. So is there a motion to re-adopt the meeting room use policy as with those, those small changes in it?
So move.
Motion's made. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions made in second and any discussion? You have some discussion on this one?
Yep.
Okay. What do you got?
So first, on the second page. It's just a couple of typos on 11.
There is.
They can meet requests. Meeting me would only.
That's interesting.
So every effort will be made to grant the specific date and is that a time?
And meet requests.
What did the old ones say?
That's what I'm going for. Yeah.
Me request?
That's interesting. I wonder how that happens.
Time.
Time request. Yeah.
Is it time?
Lost the time. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So I will, I will update that. So you know.
And then. I don't know. On the outside regular business hours section, we say we're gonna. Charge $25 an hour to have an employee here. I don't know how long that's been in here, but I wonder if that. Is enough at this point.
So that, that, that went back, when we first adopted this, there was a lot of discussion about.
And then we've got to turn around and pay that person overtime.
Yeah.
What usually happens is there's somebody in that group who is a town, has access to either the fire department or the town hall, and they offer to be that person. So we don't have to pay anybody. However. Um, we might want to up the amount.
We're gonna pay this. What's your hourly rate?
Well, that's the $25 is, is kind of where we said, we settled on, they got, that covered enough. It's, it's only come up. Like once really that we've actually had to charge someone that. So it, $25 may not be enough. And, and we, I mean, we can, we can charge whatever we want to. There's, there's no. But it's basically to cover the time for someone to come and unlock the door and wait till they're ready to go and then lock the door again.
I'm gonna get some water.
This is not a big deal. Though I wonder if it should be 40 bucks.
Where I'm, I, I didn't catch the typo. So this is going to come back anyway. So.
Yeah, we could say 50. I mean.
Do I hear 60?
Somebody up to open the door and to wait and to close the door.
Yeah, we're, we're talking per hour. So.
Yeah.
Not per event. So we gotta make sure we realize it. We're talking per hour.
But we're gonna pay him overtime. So it's gonna be time and a half or whatever the person.
Well, most, most of the people that were coming back are, are not, well, I guess this would depend upon the person.
Yeah. So. Ideas? You go over there pretty quiet. I mean, we're trying to, I mean, it is a public building and we're trying to not make money, but we're not trying to lose money. So you might want to think about a higher rate.
This is town people using this or is this?
Anyone's allowed to make the requests, but we have to have someone who has building access to come and be here. And not just leave them alone.
How often have you had to sit around for?
We, we've had this for a few years and where we, where, where we've had to pay someone to be here, it's happened once, legitimately once. Most people are like, oh, I'll just, I'll, I'll rearrange my time or. There is someone from the town that is able to assume responsibility and that, that's been the larger scenario. So. But that is there to allow after hours use. It doesn't, it does not happen o, often. I think. Once we complete the remodel downstairs and if we advertise that, that space, that may change, but. I, you know, that's, that's, that's a future problem.
I think we can leave it alone for now. And if it's something that needs to get. You know, if it's something that happens more often, we can always adjust.
Change it. And then we revamp the downstairs and then we change it again.
As a policy, you can change it next week and it is what it is. There's no.
There's, this is not like an.
Yeah. Very easy to change.
We were just, you know, beating up on the hourly rate. The $25 and.
Yeah, we'll see.
I think we did that four, maybe four years ago.
Do, do we want to do something with this or correct the typos first?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, well, if you would like to.
We can improve the concept.
Yes. And I can bring it to you Monday.
Oh, that's true. Okay. So all in favor of re-adopting the meeting room use policy, leaving the rate at 25? Okay. And with the typos corrected. All in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Somebody made a motion, right? Thank you, Sharon. And let's see, and Matt seconded it. All right.
Uh, the last one did not have any changes, just, just updating it and see if anything changes you wanted to make to it.
Well. This is the one where we talked about your, your title. Yes. Cause so under F. And now that was changed from the previous.
Oh yeah.
Previous version said administrative assistant.
Index in.
So it should go back to. Town administrative assistant to the select board.
Otherwise it's fine.
Once at the bottom of the first page, once at the top of the next page. This is in effect?
Yes.
Okay.
It is.
So is there a motion to, with, with the correction of Bill's title? Is there a motion to re-adopt the town security camera policy?
He moved out second.
Okay. Joey, Joey move, Matt seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. And you'll get us a new one of these two.
I will.
Okay.
We have two that we have to sign, right? One we signed.
Two that, and if Bill gets them done, we'll sign them Monday night.
Yep.
Free town meeting. Okay.
All right. So that covers. All the extra items, I think, covered all the like, I'm on the desk. That should be everything. And I just left with the items on the agenda.
Okay. Well, let's see. So SWAC appointment form, Solid Waste Alliance Communities. Each year we have to designate our delegates proposal. In, in the past, it's been Larry Delveneri and Bill Bauer. The proposal is Larry Delveneri and alternate Steve Canny is our new guy. Um, and they both agreed to do it, right?
They have.
Okay. Is there a motion? So move. Question's been made and seconded for those two representatives. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Coming your way. I'm not even sure what order these are in, but let's take a look at Rob Stubbs. And the, uh, charger infrastructure upgrade. This is, whoa. All right, why don't you talk to us about this? This is thirty-eight thousand nine fifty-nine forty-three.
So this is for, this is upgrade the electrical work in the building. So when we got the proposal for the grant, which, which they've got, they reached out, they have, they have a couple of questions and I, I cannot get ahold of them. So I'm still trying. This is, we, we had, we had broken the proposal into two parts. One to upgrade the electrical, electrical service to the building. And the other for the grant, the charger installations. This is for the former. So i- if we are awarded the grant, we could qualify for up to twenty thousand dollars of this cost to be covered. When the committee reviewed the proposal, they decided that this was necessary in order to move forward with the remodel downstairs anyway. So we, they wanted to move forward with this irregardless of the grant award. Uh, I was talking with, with Ivan, uh, from Rob Stubbs and there is a couple of pieces which have some substantial lead time of four to six months. Uh, if we approve the proposal, they can order those items. We are not charged for them until they, I believe they ship or they, they're delivered to them. So we would be able to know, we'll know, but if we get the grant award, we would not incur any costs before, uh, the, before the award. Uh, but if we approve the proposals, we'll allow them to forward the acquiring the, the parts they need to start the work.
Which we would need whether we get the grant or not.
Right, that was the, that was.
Committee.
I thought we did this.
We, 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 we said we wanted to, we never actually signed.
Vote that night?
You did, but you didn't actually sign the proposal. So this, they, they need a, they need a signature.
Okay, so do we need to vote again or do we need a signature?
Well, you, you didn't, you voted, you voted to move forward, but there was no vote.
Move that we accept the proposed price from, uh, Rob Stevens for the upgrades to electrical system at the town office and authorize. Yep, on behalf of the town.
Second.
Okay, um, a couple of questions. One is, is Stubbs an approved vendor?
Yes.
Did we go over this before?
Yes.
Okay.
Approved vendor and they are the only vendor.
Did, yeah, that was, that was my second question. Did we ask for other quotes?
Build that everything he could.
Yes, yes.
And if we don't, um, get the grant, where's the money coming from?
Uh, either building maintenance or capital improvement.
Okay.
That was our choice.
Yep.
Okay. So motion's been made and seconded to accept the Rob Stubbs proposal for the electrical upgrade in the town office at thirty-nine, thirty-eight thousand nine fifty-nine point four three. Any further discussion? And to authorize me to sign. Sure, I'm spending all this. Okay, if not, all in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed?
You've been on this bandwagon, Mary, since we started to get the downstairs done.
I know.
So this is like.
Yeah, basically step two, we have a beautiful new wall downstairs, ready, ready for it to go on to, so.
Yeah. Bernie get all the work done already?
Yes.
Oh, good, okay. So that's done, what's?
So that wall fits in with, um, NBF's plan, right?
NBF designed the wall where it stands and he used their plans to construct said wall.
Okay.
So it is exactly what we asked for.
Right.
That was the.
No door in the wall, but this wall.
No door, no, no, there's no.
I'm just waiting for the shower, that's all.
It, it's in the, it's, it's, it's in the works, yeah.
Okay, um, I have State of Vermont Standard Subrecipient Agreement.
Yes.
This is, we received an award of just under ten thousand dollars. It is for.
Uh, Building Resilience Infrastructure, B R I C. Uh, let's see, I forget, but it's for, it's for work toward updating our local hazard mitigation plan.
Right.
Uh, and, uh, it's basically so we can, we do have to get some, our, some proposals for it, but it basically will fund a large portion of the cost, update our plan. Um, and ours was one that was expiring sooner rather than later, so we were put on the list of priority for approval. Basically, we, we got approved because we applied, so because our, ours is expiring, so the next step will be, we, we go out, the Regional Planning Commission would essentially be the one that's gonna do this for us. So there's a process, the process we have to go through, but. What's that?
They're getting a lot of jobs.
They are getting a lot of jobs tonight, yeah, they're, they're busy, yeah.
This is, if I'm, if I'm correct, we need to update it. So if we should have another disaster, we got a higher percentage of our local costs covered by FEMA?
So that's, that's part of it. Uh, and the work that the planning commission is doing on the flood hazard regulations gives us even a little more, but this, this is a, a big part of that. So yeah. Uh, so there is a twenty-five percent match and in-kind work can be applied to that. And Marty and I would be working on this as well, so we would be able to use some of our time to cover that match.
What do we need?
So we need a motion to approve and authorize me to sign on behalf of the town. So move.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, anyone opposed?
Free money.
Almost free money.
Almost free money. Good chunk of it. Twenty-five cents on the dollar.
Okay. Twenty-seven, twenty-four. Mariti. Next, oh, this, so I just hit the, I hit the pile that I put it back. Next is the town road thing, we'll do next meeting.
Yeah.
Think that takes care of that. We got a few things. Um, oh, how about that? Grant the bond, let's do the bond. You received um, electronically, and maybe you got in the mail too. Um, the documentation that, um, as you know, we were approved for a bond to, um, help pay for our new public safety building. And, um, I couldn't, i- if you looked at what was provided to us, it didn't tell us the interest rate. It just told us how much our payments were. So I know it's like, wait, what is the interest rate anyway? So I reached out to Matt Blumer and I believe I sent through to you via email. Um, something that, that shows, he did get an answer about what the bond percentage rate is, and if I can find the thing. It's, yeah. Yeah, okay. It is, if I'm reading this correctly, there's a four-page handout that says Omni Cap. And it's bond statistics and I went to page three and I went down to the bottom. And it shows our bond amount and then the yield is three point oh one, three, four, nine, seven percent.
That's a lot of decimal places.
That is a lot of decimal places and I take that to mean that that's what our percentage cost is.
If you go to the last page, Mary.
Yeah.
It shows the accrued interest over the ten years. And the payments and then the total. So it looks like we're borrowing two point five, one, seven, eight, five million dollars. Or the cost of four hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred thirteen dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Yep.
Over a ten-year period.
Wait a minute.
Which is. We couldn't have done much better.
Yeah, yeah.
That, you know, I mean, I like the idea of the conventional loan and being able to pay it off if we were ahead, but going with the ten-year note.
The ten-year note helps a great deal.
And, and doing it, the, the cost is pretty significant.
I think you were right on that. I think you were the one who said.
Well, Kurt, Kurt and I thought the ten years would be, it's a little bit
Yeah.
Harder maybe upfront payback, but um, I think, I don't know, did, did the show a page? I was trying to see what the per year cost, because I don't, it, I know we pay.
First year is like.
Okay.
The first year is different because we don't pay any.
Anything and we start paying, it looks like on the principal in, uh, November first of twenty-five at two fifty-one, seven eighty-five.
Right.
So there'll be ten payments of that amount to get that. So they've just break the principal down and then plus the amount of interest which is paid twice a year.
Yeah.
So it will be about seventy-one, seventy-two thousand plus the two fifty-one, so we'll be somewhere in the three twenty range.
Yeah.
Per year. A recent twenty-year bond was looking at a three eighteen-year payment.
Oh, okay.
For twenty years. That was for twenty years.
This is a much better deal.
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, putting aside that four pager that I sent out to you, that's just information. But we actually have is the loan agreement and several, a loan agreement. We have a.
Is there just one copy of that? Where do we all have?
I think you got this all electronically.
Uh, it's in their pack, it's in the package. Okay, for those that receive them.
Lot of words to say, we're gonna loan you two point five million dollars, you're gonna pay us back two point nine.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yes. And there's a, so we're signing a loan agreement, we're signing the general obligation bond. We're sign, well, we're, we're not signing the certificate of registration. I think that's our town clerk who needs to do that, right? I don't know why that was, I think that's for Carrie because it says the Office of Treasurer. Um, there is an assignment form, there is plot, project completion cer- certificate, which we don't sign yet. Okay. There's a form of receipt, once we get the money, we sign saying we got it. And then there's a treasurer's certificate. So it looks like the two things we all need to sign and approve tonight are the loan agreement for the bond along with the attachment to it. And the general obligation bond itself.
Straight from the wires with the flags.
It did.
Yes.
So when, when I, I talked to Matt last week and he sent me the copy that's in your packet and he says, it's almost certainly gonna be the, the final draft. We will send you a final draft. If there's changes, they're going to include a note to say this changed from the draft he emailed out.
And there was no note.
That came in on Friday and I left it right, closed that envelope, so it would be here for today, so. So it did not appear anything changed.
What's your pleasure?
Sign that thing.
The thing, okay, so.
Sign the thing with the pages. In all the spots, the dollar signs, the decimals.
Motion's been made and seconded that the select board approved the loan agreement as well as the, um, general obligation bond. And the second, did I hear a second?
Second.
Oh, okay, I did hear a second.
Yeah, sure.
Well, I don't know if I seconded.
How many spots are there assigned, just so we can count?
Well, there's, I got, there's one, two, three, four, five stickies, but I think there's only two places where we all have to sign. I think Carrie has to sign as treasurer and then there are some that you don't sign until you actually get the money in your hot little hands, so.
This money is available, it looks like March first, is that what it said? Is that what I read?
March fourteenth.
March fourteen.
Closing date.
Perfect.
All right, motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, none in opposition, none abstaining, so I'm just gonna pass it on, sign and pass it on.
Your name's not there, don't sign.
Yeah.
We're gonna follow suit.
Oh, boy.
Okay.
It's only money. It went in the first time, no, it won't.
All right, let's see, how are we doing on our list?
Probably. Okay.
Executive Director.
Why can't I find the second place you signed that?
Where the blue sticky is.
Yeah, I know. And this is sticky.
Okay, because.
They're all, all fiber, all fiber different. They use fancy paper.
Fancy paper.
It's, that's un- unsecured drawer. You know, your name.
Can I get the white out real quick?
Okay.
We knew this was coming.
I'm gonna stick that in there.
So.
Um, we got a couple of other things on the desk. We've got a personnel committee meeting that Matt's gonna report on.
Do we know what the, um, payments will be on the center bond, what's left?
Um, we used to put it in the town report. I don't know if we still do.
It's in there.
So.
I, I just. No, we can't have, I think we're only gonna have so. Yeah, thirteen or fourteen, we started. So we're getting down to
Oh, yeah.
Eight years. I, I was thinking one ninety-eight or something. Looking the other day.
Yeah, all right.
The only reason I ask is because they're gonna start about the same time.
That's right.
We're gonna be looking at about three twenty and one eighty, so.
So let's hop over to insurance about to sign.
Especially if you got school behind them there. Yeah, that's really gonna hurt.
You heard all of them, you were there.
So next, last meeting, you authorized me to draft a letter in support of the Rutland Free Libraries application for a U S Capital Projects Fund grant for libraries, which I did, it's on your desk. If you, I, we, we kind of approved the, approved doing it, but this is the actual, actual, so I'll entertain a motion to approve and sign this. We all get to sign it. So move, motion's made and seconded, Matt and Sharon, any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? I too, so. The, and it's here, I started with the other side last time. Um, also on your desk.
Signing fair. Gotta keep the signing fair.
I know, I know. It's gonna be your turn next here. Okay, there is a three-pager, Select Board of the Town of Rutland, Vermont Decision Concerning Discontinuance of Dire Road as a town road. Um, basically what I did, I put in lawyer language what we had already decided. Um, which is we are gonna discontinue Dire Road. We have findings of fact, we have conclusions of law which I pulled from some information our town council had sent us. And an order, um, which basically says um, Dire Management, this is now yours. And I did reference the survey. Uh, I said, well, the property formerly known as Dire Road will revert to the ownership of Dire Management LLC in a manner not inconsistent with the survey of Robertson Franzone dated May thirteenth, two thousand and five, which will be recorded in the land record, so we don't have to hop around anymore on that. So, um, is there a motion to accept this as our findings, conclusions and so on?
So move.
Motion's made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Sharon? Okay, to discontinue it?
Yes.
Okay.
We were trying to turn the fan on.
Okay, she, um, this is a majority unanimous vote. Okay, and.
Sorry, Mary.
Okay, I'm just gonna go merrily along. All right, Personnel Committee. Matt.
Okay, you have minutes. We discussed some things. Every time we need to discuss, we find more things to discuss. So we still have ways to go. We should soon have um, proposed policies, um, for you to review on, um, comp time holidays. Uh, and the other thing that's been accomplished pretty much is. Uh, and the other thing that's been accomplished pretty much is. Uniform time sheets for departments, which will be rolled out soon for employees. So we've, we've ended up asking Theresa to do a lot more things than we initially. Anticipated, so she's just about used up her budget again, um, but. We've definitely gotten good value for that. So at this point, Mary and I think you're going to. Continue to independently slog through. The Personnel Handbook, try to narrow down issues that we need. If we need, you know, further discussion with Theresa on that, and then probably come back to you with proposal for additional time if. Necessary, but at this point, we need to determine how much that might be, I did look here. On the budget status sheet to see what we have in the budget, um, on the professional service line, we've used about half of it. So.
What, we had eighteen thousand budget?
Eighteen budgeted, we've used ninety-five hundred, uh, as of. Whenever this was done recently, so it should be pretty much up to the minute. So, I don't know, unless there's something big that we anticipated in that line, we shouldn't have a problem. Uh, authorizing more time. Completely off topic, though, I did just notice as I was doing this, um, it happened to catch my eye. Scholarship line that's in here is, she's got it eleven thousand, one twenty-five, and. We voted fifteen.
Was that, what was actually paid out so far, though?
Um, I don't, well, that's the actual. That may be. I don't know. Oh, yeah, because the budget, she actually doesn't have the budget number, she just has a. Expenditure, I guess, so that may be just, we didn't, if it's the actual line, it's what we've paid out so far.
Okay. So more to come on Personnel. You know, we debated whether to ask for more time now, or Matt and I are gonna. Try and cover and the, what is left, which is a gr- still a great deal of the personnel policy. But kind of zero in on things that need to be done, um, and then give you an idea of how much more time it will take.
I mean, just to give you an idea, the, the draft manual that we, or like, what are we calling it, not a manual, I guess, but a. Whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, you know. What, it's more than three times the size of the one we have now.
Yep.
So it's a lot, but. You know, Theresa's. Girl, thinking on that is, the more we have in there, the less likely we are to have problems down the line, because things will be in there and spelled out, so. Probably right about that, but it just means, you know, there's a lot of things in there that we probably have never thought about, that we have questions about when we go through it, so. Um, and of course, some of that too is stuff that we have to look at. And say, oh, we're, we're a municipality, does this make sense in our context? You know, versus, do we need to, do we need to tweak language here because we're not a. Private business, and then what does it mean, where the whole separate issue is. What it, what portions of this are we gonna apply to, to us as elected officials versus employees, so. There's a lot of parts to it, so it's taking longer than. We wish, but we're making progress.
More to come, more spending to come probably, but we'll ask your permission before we do it. If anybody wants to be on the. Yeah, I think really it is, I mean, we've needed to do this in-depth review for a long time, so.
Years.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, um, thank you, Matt, and that takes care of Personnel Committee now. We have still left, um, Board to Discuss Draft Short-Term Rental Ordinance. And, um, you should have in your packet. The Revised Short-Term Rental Ordinance with the first. The first section, I think it was Joey's point several months back that we needed to, um. Condense several of the things that were. Kind of goals and condense them into, you know, just a few. And that's what Bill has done, and if I can find my copy. Are you ready to, to move on this short-term rental thing? Do you wanna? Talk about it, do you wanna reserve it? Do you wanna just get it done? This is the version date, August seventeenth, twenty twenty-three.
I, I actually had a, I had a chance to talk with, uh, one of the, uh, Division of Fire Safety guys this morning on a totally different topic, but I said this was coming up tonight. He, he is fully in favor of this being put in place, so he was, he, he hopes that we do, we do this. Um, it was the purpose section we were talking about, that needed a, but that, that was, that was what we're down to, so. What, what is there is, it, we, we, has changed from what it was and, and, uh, it's, it's much more concise than it was before. And remember, if, let's, say, you, say you choose to adopt this tonight, it would be sixty days before anything actually goes into, before. It would actually take effect, but that's in the, in the end. Uh, there were dates that were giving people the opportunity, like, not putting it into effect. Until January first of like twenty-five, so that way people would have. Owners would have this year to have inspections done before anything, before the ordinance took effect and started registration. To give people time to, to get, to get those scheduled, get those done, so.
I mean, it's a lot of words, the, the goals that I thought we were trying to achieve would be. Identify where these short-term properties were and. More registration, we're not looking to limit the number in town, we are asking that. They abide by whatever, um, Department of Fire saved, Division of Fire Safety rules and regulations they're subject to. And. I mean, that's pretty much all we're trying to do, there was a lot of discussion here from. People that were here that we were looking to make money, that this was a money grab, and I don't think that was the town's, the. Fees charged are to, for basically the cost of administering this thing, um, and I think. That this reflects what we wanna do, we're not trying to put anybody out of business, we're not trying to tell them, you can or can't, we're not trying to. Do anything, no, you know, there was some, I think there was some thoughts coming in, the town was gonna regulate how many there were gonna be in town, how many of these rental properties we'd allow. Never our intent, um, we weren't picking on any particular industry like the, you know, the Airbnb people took. Major offense to this, but nowhere in here are they addressed as, you know, we're not after them. It's just a uniform thing because they're, and I said this before, that somebody could have an apartment. Or multiple apartments in this new fire station, you could be paying, somebody could come there, rent a room. Monday through Friday, or Sunday night through Friday to be working on the job and then go home, those are short-term rentals. They, nothing to do with Airbnbs, and, and I think that was our goal all along, and I think this reflects what we were, we were trying to do. What I would like to see if we do approve this is that once these lists are generated, we provide our public, our. Fire department and our police department with a cost, or copies of this, and a copy of this go to Division of Fire Safety, so they know. Where they are, and if, up to them, if they wanna go inspect them, we're not gonna enforce this, we're not gonna chase it down, that's their job. These are the places in town, I, I think in the interest of public safety, this was, I. Nobody likes more government, nobody likes more, right, but we're not. Telling them they can't do anything they're doing, we just wanna know that you're doing.
Right.
And this does reflect that.
It's kinda like the dog licensing, like, you can have as many as you want to, just tell us you got them.
They've five, eight, six bucks for a dog, or whatever it is, if they're spayed or neutered or not, and. People do complain about that, though, too, but it's an idea just to handle on what's going on in town.
So is there a motion?
I'd move to approve this as presented and updated and corrected and talked about, talked about, and talked about.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve, um, as printed. Any further discussion?
I have a few minor items.
Mary, you have, you have my copy, so if you could make, make the edits on that, please. Be happy to take that one.
So I have one, one substantive thing, and then the rest just, is like formatting.
Okay. Page?
So page four. Under section four, paragraph five, these deadlines, Bill, I don't remember, was there a reason, particular reason why? The reporting. Would be on October first versus, say.
No. They're completely arbitrary, there, there's, there's no, we, that is ours to change as we want to with.
It just seems to me like it'd be easier for folks to keep track of if they just expired at the end of the year now, of course, you don't wanna take new ones on January one, I guess, but. So I don't know.
We could do fiscal year, we could do.
Fiscal year.
Well.
October first to September thirtieth.
Well, that's true, but maybe, maybe it should align with our fiscal.
Whatever you wanna do.
But then, well, except then, when's it go into effect, which is.
So the, the very last page has the effective date, and my thinking, my, my thought was make it effective January first. Of twenty-five. And we could have the first reporting due. July first.
Of.
Twenty-five.
Okay.
And then annually after that.
But then.
That would have to be changed.
Yeah, so I mean, there are, there's some changes I'm gonna have to make in this anyway to, to do this, but.
This is functional.
Well, people could submit them before Jan- I mean.
Yeah.
Honor before.
Could be before the due date, I mean, so would it be easier if it were just January one? Every year.
That's fine.
Okay, so what you're proposing on page four, section four, honor before January one of each year.
Well, and I guess it's at the top, too, it says honor before, yeah.
And then down under all short-term rent, number five, all short-term rental authorizations and registration numbers shall expire on. December thirty-first.
You wanna go calendar year, Matt, or, or fiscal year?
If I were operating one of these, I would think calendar year would be easier to keep track of, but. And it's not really gonna affect our fiscal situation, because. So fee for operating thing is not.
No, whatever, whatever you think works.
Yeah, I think that's easier for folks, and then, then because if it goes into effect, January one, people know. Okay, I've got this year to get it done, and then it's good for a whole year, and then I have to do it six months later.
And most businesses operate on a, um, calendar year. Right, you know, you know, where, calendar.
Right.
Most businesses, that's the way they operate, so it would be for, when you're doing like taxes, not that it would matter, but.
Deals and rooms is part of this too, and that's gonna be the, quarterly or something, so.
Okay, so is that consensus on that, page four? So it's gonna be January first and then expire December thirty-first of each year.
So then.
So what are the dates again, Mary?
Okay, so you're on page four.
Yep.
So honor before January first of each year. Okay, you have to do these things, you have to register. And the registration lasts for a year and it expires on December thirty-first of each year. Then you have to renew January first, the next year, okay?
Yep.
Right?
Okay, um, so just important, anything, so page five. We got these numbered paragraphs here, there's spaces between them all except one and two.
Yeah, it, it, there's, there, there's some, because there's some crossed off language gonna come out that, that, I'll, when I get to the final draft, I will, yeah, I'll, I'll fix all that, because there's. Yeah, there's a bunch of stuff that's gonna, gonna line up weird, but that'll, I'll be fixed, yeah.
Page six, paragraph six.
Yep.
Used STR there, and I think that's the only place he used it, so I'll just write it out like you did it, or else.
All right. So. Motion's been made and seconded to approve with those minor edits and the edits of the, the date changes. Any further discussion, amendments, corrections? All in favor?
Forever gonna get no vote out of me on this. Forever gonna get no vote out of me on this ordinance.
Okay, well. Understood.
Yep, and I will probably, whenever the opportunity gets to where this board shifts. And I can get three no votes on this, this ordinance will be gone.
Okay. All right.
Just making that point.
No, hey, perfectly okay, so, um. All in favor of adopting the short-term rental ordinance as amended, please say aye. Aye, Sharon, no?
No.
Okay, so we have. Adopted it. By a three. Two vote, and this is the twenty-seventh day of February. Two, four. Okay, and if it's okay, I'll just. Pass the signature page.
I'll probably have a new one for you without line numbers and.
Yeah, you might, but this'll start the clock. And I think that is all I have. Okay, thank you. Did I, did I cover, I've gone through your, so, and I've gone through mine.
Done this.
In there, we did SWAC, we did the social service, we did meeting room policy, we did the camera, security camera. We did the safety grant application, we did the Old Town Hall Electrical Agreement. We're waiting on the highway certification form, um, we did the emergency management grant application. And we signed the bond for the public safety building spending. An enormous amount of money. Borrowing an enormous amount of money, okay, anything else? Do we have any, I'm just looking at the little notes at the bottom, do we have any reason that we? Executive session? No, really.
At some point.
Do you wanna do an?
Not tonight. No, I have, I wanna ask you a question afterwards, but.
Okay.
And then we'll decide.
So is there any other business to be conducted? And if not, is there any motion? Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn all in favor of adjourning, please say aye. Aye. So, meeting folks, covered it.
Monday night at seven.